Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this January 16th, 2024. Got the year right, got the date right. And I don't really want to quote what the temperature is because I'd hate to get that wrong today. I don't think we want to take a vote on whether we prefer 16 degrees or 115, but it's questionable which one is better for us. But welcome. And we will start, as usual, this meeting with our Chaplain prayer and pledges, and we want to welcome Chaplain Dawkins to the front to lead us in both. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
There you go. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for a new year, one that we've never seen before and will never see again. I pray that you will make this year one that is filled with opportunities, blessings, and challenges all at the same time. So I pray for those that are in this city and its community, leaders whom you have given charge and responsibility and the authority to watch and guide over our city and make decisions that affect all of us. So I ask that you would work mightily in them today. So we invite you to come into this room and cause them to have a productive meeting and that there be a sense of agreement and cooperation and come to peaceful solutions for the benefit of our community. I pray for warmth and shelter for those who do not have it, those can come into a place where they can find shelter and comfort during these cold weathers. And, Lord, you said in your word in Jeremiah 29:11 that you already know the plans that you have for us, plans to prosper us and plans that are not for evil, but plans that will bring us to a good future and a hope. So I pray and lift up the mayor, her staff, and the assistants, the city council members, the city manager, the city attorney, and all the persons that are instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray for the police chief and the entire police force, the sheriff's department, and they that they will continue to protect and serve the residents of this city. I pray for the fire chief and the fire department and all the first responders who serve our city. And lastly, I pray again for this year that you will bring continued economic prosperity and safety for our city. May you draw in and attract to our city industry, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name, amen and amen. Let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you.
Today, we have one proclamation, which is our recognition of our school board month. And so I would ask that all of you here today representing SAISD and the school board please come forward to accept this proclamation. We might start with the introduction of the new SAISD superintendent. I think this is your first meeting in your first month on board, so you want to introduce yourself to our members in the audience today. Yeah, I think it would be good if you would.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Christopher Moran. It is a pleasure to join you as the school superintendent of San Angelo ISD. It's an honor to follow Carl Detlef and to join such a talented and caring school board. I think you all know that the school board here in San Angelo is committed as stewards and advocates for the more than 13,000 students that attend our school district to provide a safe and caring learning environment so that every student that comes through the doors of our schools is provided the very best. We've got work to do, and we know that. But today and in this time is a time that public schools have come under attack like no other. And these seven individuals have stepped forward to serve this community as volunteers. They don't get paid much, in fact, nothing. But they do show up faithfully, and they do advocate, and they do serve this community faithfully. And I'd like to say thank you as I get to know them and as I assimilate into your community. It's a pleasure to be here, and we honor our board this month, really every month, but especially this month. And so Amy Mizell Flint, Dr. Taylor Kingman, Dr. Kyle Mills, Pam Duncan, Gerard Gallegos, Bill Dindel, and we're missing one member, and that's Lupita Arroyo, who is not able to make it today. So Mayor Gunter, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And council members, I look forward to getting to know you as well in a time to honor our school board in our district. Thank you.
I think he covered almost everything, so I don't know if I need to read this proclamation, but I'm required to, so I'm going to go ahead and add some words to his wonderful comments. The mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of our children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to our society in an ever-changing world. Our San Angelo ISD board members are committed to the children of San Angelo and believe all children can be successful lifelong learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of each child to support each child's hopes and dreams. This distinguished group of servant leaders includes Board President Dr. Taylor Kingman, Vice President Mrs. Amy Mizell Flint, Secretary Mr. Gerard Gallegos, Treasurer Mr. Bill Dindel, Mrs. Pam Duncan, Dr. Kyle Mills, and Mrs. Lupita Arroyo. SAISD board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. They are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system and dedicate numerous unpaid personal hours to support and lead our San Angelo schools. Our San Angelo ISD school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, declare our appreciation to the members of the San Angelo Independent School Board and proclaim the month of January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month in San Angelo, Texas, and urge all citizens to join us in San Angelo ISD in recognizing the dedication and hard work of the SAISD school board members and to partner with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children and produces future-ready graduates. Taylor, would you like to come forward and accept this and offer some comments?
Sure. Thank you. So first, I just want to say thank you to the city council and everyone for recognizing us this month. Obviously, the board spends a lot of unpaid hours, and to be recognized for each of ours that all these people volunteer is important, so thank you. We're blessed to have a great relationship with the city and community leaders, and that makes our job easier. So thank you all for that as well. Our district is filled with wonderful teachers, administrators, staff that are working diligently to prepare students for success, and it's our job as a board to support that, is our job to support their successes and then help also support the areas where we need to improve. And as a board, we're working very hard to do that, and we understand that community relationships, relationships with our city, our community leaders, and industry is important so that we can create better students that have more success, and that's good for San Angelo. And so we're going to continue to do that work, and we appreciate all of you all as well. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to offer comments this morning? Okay, let's move forward over this way, and we're going to have a picture. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have people here who would like to offer public comment?
Mayor, I'd like to start, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm Teresa James. I'm the city attorney. I have been asked multiple times in the past couple of weeks why we allow people to speak in our public comment period who have such negative things to say about us. Some of these questions are specifically about Mr. Barrio and his self-proclaimed so-called citation that he issued to the City of San Angelo City Council, so I would like to address those questions. The City of San Angelo has, for a very long time, had a tradition of allowing members of the public to speak at every regular city council meeting. They can speak for three minutes on whatever they choose. Most citizens discuss upcoming public events or concerns they have that they would like to be addressed. But there are also a few who come with personal agendas and use their time to air their grievances with the city, often through unspecified accusations of corruption or wrongdoing on behalf of council or staff. And we listen to them every time, and we allow them to speak every time because they have a constitutional right to address their representatives, and we will protect their right to do so. So even though Mr. Barrio has alleged that there are attempts to silence him, we will defend his right to speak during public comment regardless of what he has to say. The second question I'm often asked is why don't we respond at the meeting? And part of the answer to that question is the council is limited to what they can discuss during the public comment period to avoid violations of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We can provide information, as I'm doing today, but there's no ability to have a dialogue with the speaker or to decide on the matter at that time. That is typically the reason there is no response. In the case of Mr. Barrio's self-proclaimed citation, we do not respond because there is nothing to respond to. Mr. Barrio's citation that he issued to council is not real, but it's just a way in which to make his public comments seem more official, when in reality it carries no legal weight beyond information regarding a grievance he has with the city. This is also why, when Mr. Barrio claims that legal consultations with my clients about their personal responsibility to the public is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, is not correct. The Open Meetings Act ensures that matters of public concern, that the council has legal authority to decide, are decided in a meeting open to the public. Since the self-proclaimed citation issued by Mr. Barrio is not real, but rather just a public comment airing grievances, there is no official business that needs to be decided. Therefore, discussing it cannot be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I will say that one benefit of Mr. Barrio's comments is that the press is very interested right now in what happens at city council meetings, and I hope the press that's watching this morning will remain interested for the remainder of the meeting because the real work of government carried out by real dedicated public servants will take place here today. Today, this council will consider action to complete a water project and a sewer project that will help provide secure water and reliable sewer for decades to come. They will consider the application for monies that will help our fire and police departments better protect you and themselves. There will be discussions on tax abatement programs that will assist the city in attracting new businesses that will bring jobs and revenue to the city, and there will be decisions made on how property will be utilized, decisions that will impact the uses of those lands for decades. I have no doubt that Mr. Barrio is going to draft some official response to this comment and allege we are trying to quiet your voices and take away your rights. That argument will also not be real. We understand there are citizens that are unhappy with some of the actions of the city. We speak to those citizens every day, and every citizen is able to call the mayor, their council member, the city manager, one of the directors, or myself to discuss their concerns. But in addition to that, if any citizen has a grievance with the city, there are multiple real paths to have a grievance heard and resolved. If you've been injured or had property damage by the city, contact our risk management department, and they will send you a claim form. If you believe you've been discriminated against because you have a disability, go to cosatx.us/ada and provide a comment or file a formal grievance. If you believe the mayor or a council member has acted unethically, you should report what has occurred to either the mayor, a council person, the city manager, or myself, and we will gather facts from you and initiate an investigation into the allegation. And if you wish to file a petition to create a new ordinance, to remove a current ordinance, or to recall a council member, the city clerk is happy to work through that process with you, as they have with many other citizens before you. Or if, like Mr. Barrio, you want to come and issue self-proclaimed so-called citations to city council, there is a public comment period at every regularly scheduled council meeting where you can do that as well. We will protect your right and Mr. Barrio's right to do so. Thank you.
Further public comment today? Jackie, you want to come forward?
Good morning.
Jackie, chas night. I am a local engineer. I'm also a rancher, a sheep and goat rancher, and I own a ranch and a wildlife preserve out in Knickerbocker, Texas. And this is my primary place of business in the city of San Angelo because y'all are the closest city where I do most of my business and things that I do. And so my first question is, on the public comments, is it three minutes per item or three minutes for total comment? Because I have a couple of items, please, and I'd like to know the answer to that.
Okay. A public comment during this time of the meeting is three minutes per speaker.
Per speaker?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
If you have a public comment regarding an item on the agenda-
Yes, ma'am.
-after council has discussion, mayor calls for public comment, citizens can come up, give comment then. That is also limited to three minutes unless they are the applicant proponent of the item, then they get five minutes.
Okay. And so, and you can only ask that one time, so if you have a question in that, you can only do that once?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to delineate so I'm clear and understand your rules. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. So I have a timer. So the first-
Yeah, there's your timer now.
Well, I'm starting now because I had questions. Okay, but I have my own timer because I had question first. Okay, excellent. Well, I brought my own, because sometimes I can talk.
Well, Jackie, you're running time, so you need to talk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. The first thing is I want to turn in a file. This file relates to some things that have occurred with me over the past three and a half years in this town and in this city that most of you are all aware of. This file is called the Wanted to Know What to Do with the Dentist Situation in the 300 to 400-acre ranch, my ranch, and I'm turning this in, and this contains the Adult Protective Services files and the lawyers' files where they tried to steal my ranch for three and a half years. And I think I'm done now because I just quit this. So I'm turning this in to Ms. Gunter, and you can have these files. Because I asked this to be investigated when I was assaulted in this town, and my husband's truck stolen, and nobody would do so. Second thing is, do I understand we're putting a PETA sheep in this town?
Excuse me?
Are we? Second item.
The PETA sheep, that we have a PETA sheep. Teresa, you want to answer that?
We've had a request by PETA to install a sheep, but they have not finalized that request.
Not on city property, I assume?
It would have to be on city property or private property.
I'm a sheep and goat rancher, and we're in the middle of sheep and goat country, and I find that very inappropriate that we would take my public space and put a PETA sheep directly against something that I do for a living. So I'm just stating that publicly. Now, I'll be happy to take that sheep and put him in my barn with my other sheep, and she or he can live there, but not on public property, and I have a problem with that. We are sheep and goat country. For 25 years, have raised sheep and goats. And though I'm a fan of protecting animals, big time, and my animals, and my animals live like queens and kings, so, yes, ma'am. Next thing is, I hear a lot, lot, lot of discussion, especially over the past few years, that parks, 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 parks. Do you know how many parks we have in this town? Anybody? 69. I think we have enough. I think we need to focus on things like sewers, water, the primary focus of our town, which should be the services you provide for us as the people that live here and even in the county and every place else. So I think we have enough parks, and I think we have enough baseball fields, and I think we have enough everything else because we built about half of them.
Could you wrap it up?
Thank you.
Unfortunately, your three minutes is up.
Okay, we're getting close.
No, honey, it's-
So the file. Okay, no, honey. So anyway, so I'm glad we're focusing on sewers. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I'll be following up with some other things in writing.
Further public comments? I know we have someone over here. You dressed appropriately today, smart woman.
I apologize. I'm on my lunch break. My name's Mary Robinson, and I live at 2008 Lindell Avenue. So I'm new to your community in the last two years, and I've never witnessed an animal crisis like I've witnessed here. So I'm not coming here to tell you everything you guys have done wrong because everybody knows what the animal issues are. I have a few suggestions that might help. So one thing that would really help is if we did a chicken wire roundup. If we reached out to all the ranchers and goat people and get fabric wire or chicken wire and go to the communities from Sixth Street to 42nd Street and say, how can I help you? Nobody wants their dog to run away. Nobody wants to wake up and their dog is a nuisance and bit someone. Nobody wants to go outside and the chain's empty or the backyard they've dug under. So a lot of people don't realize, if you attach chicken wire to your fence and you bury it three to four inches under and you put it out this way, parallel, 12 inches, your dog cannot tunnel under it. It cannot dig down and then back up. So if we start with fixing the fences, and the alley fences in that quadrant are being used, they use bricks, plywood, two-by-fours, bags, trash cans, anything they can to block the holes. So the first thing we need to ask them is, how can we help you keep your dog in? One. I understand that there's vouchers that help with spaying animals. They allow you to have one voucher a month. Realistically, everybody has more than, the people that like animals here have more than one dog. And a lot of times, if you pick a dog up off the side of the road, it's now yours. Nobody claims it. There's no way to tell if it's homeless or if they're just letting it run free because they're reckless owners. There's got to be a way to do a sweep team. People that are comfortable with animals to walk the streets or even make contact with your local trash company. Ask them, where's the Target houses? As I used to be a delivery driver when I first got here, there's multiple places I would deliver, and all you hear is puppies barking. There has to be a paper trail of the statute that says if your dog is over four months old, we're going to ticket you. How many tickets were issued last year? Do we know? How many people are actually getting money taken out of their pocket for not getting the dog neutered? Because the biggest issue is containing and multiplying. Every dog we rehome, a litter of puppies is born. So we have to have an accountability where people are actually putting money out their pocket or they're not going to stop. We have to say, besides, we're going to punish you. How can we help you? What is your problem? Why is your dog running away? There's a statute here for multiple pet permits. How many permits have we issued for multiple pets? Do we know? I mean, there's a permit in the statute that was established that says if you have more than, I think, five pets, you have to have a permit. How many did we issue last year? Did we go by and check the quality of those pets? Are we making sure that their fences are contained to own that many pets? And then the second issue I noticed is when we do adoption campaigns, right? We're doing it in the same town that all the animals are running free in. Is there a way to outsource to other communities that don't have an animal issue, that don't hold adoption events, and transport the dogs there and have the adoption event outside of our community, not giving them a dog and put it in their shelter? Can we hold an event in a town that doesn't have 40 dogs running free every day that people might want to adopt that dog and be able to contain it better? So there's a few suggestions. My biggest one is the sweep team.
Thank you for your comments.
You're very welcome.
I think those are some great ideas and things that probably we haven't all thought through. We will be having a presentation today later on on the agenda about the animal shelter. So if you have time to stay here and listen to it, and maybe you can bring up some further comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Good morning. Bob Solis, Director of Neighborhood and Family Services. On behalf of the Homeless Coalition and the city, we want to thank the Salvation Army for opening up the emergency shelter for inclement weather, especially during this cold spell. Not only does it save much-needed grant funds for the coalition, but it also saves lives, and we want to extend our appreciation. And I believe Major Martinez is here to say a few words.
Well, Bob, can you please just talk about where there is? You may come, please come forward. The two of you together can cover some of these issues that council might have. Would you please state where warming shelters are, what's available? Just cover that whole conversation.
Well, right now, the only shelter that's open is the Salvation Army. At one time, last couple of years, the city has stood up warming stations, but with the opening of the Salvation Army, that's no longer required. So that's the sole location at this point.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for allowing me to present what we've done.
Go ahead and state your name and your position if you would.
Oh, Major, I'm from Salvation Army here in San Angelo. I'm still new to the area, to San Angelo. I just got here September of '23. But since we got here, we knew that the Salvation Army had their shelter closed for various reasons and everything. And when I met, I said we would do what was needed to get that place opened for the inclement weather. While I do bring up the news that on December 25th, we did open up our center and haven't closed yet to this moment our center at all, we've been running pretty much close to near capacity with our folks in the community. I also do want to bring to the fact that while we do not have a full functioning kitchen, we do offer some of the over-the-counter condiments, I mean, foods that they can eat, they can warm up in the microwave, but we do not have a refrigerator. It's funding is a little tight. We do have, we are open for the warming center right now and have been for the last couple of days there at 122 West Second Street. And then we're transitioning over to the next street, our next building on Third Street at 34 West Third due to funding, because I am limited in what I have, but I just want to bring the city and the community up to date to let you know that we have been running this center. And as long as we can, we will continue to do this when the need is there.
Thank you. Yes, Lucy.
I just wanted to ask you, can you go ahead and say again the address of the Salvation Army?
Yes, ma'am. The inclement weather station is at 122 West Second, which is that way. Yeah, I get turned around. Even at my office, I keep on pointing south, and they actually know it's north.
So if you go up Chadburn Street?
Yes, ma'am. Behind, is it behind City Hall?
North Chadburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Behind City Hall. You turn left on Second Street.
Yes, ma'am. And you'll see the little flag flying out of the coal out there in front of the building. And then a lot of our clients, our residents or neighbors who have been staying with, they know to go on Facebook, and they see our little ad out there lending the night. Hey, go ahead and come on in. We're open. You know, even if we have to lay out a couple of pallets on the floor and everything, but we won't turn you away. You know, we'll make every effort to house you for the night.
Okay, thank you. Larry, did you want to make it?
Yes, ma'am. How many beds do you have, and what other amenities are there at the shelter?
We have 60 beds currently in place. We have our, we've made available to our friends who are staying with us, the showers, of course, during the daytime and in the evenings, the laundry service. We have our washers and dryers up and running, thank goodness, a little bit of tweaking here and there, and the water heater kicked up and has been running, has been running good. The only thing that we do not have is a refrigeration for the, to keep food cold, but most of them have, it's crazy, they just stuck them outside, and they stay cold.
I have one more question.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more question. What hours do y'all have that you accept people?
Basically, we start our intake at 6:30 and stays open basically all night. Our attendant, our monitor, who is paid to be there, has the door open.
Is that 6:30 a.m. or p.m.?
P.m.
P.m.
Yes, ma'am. And then they already know that after hours, that if San Angelo Police brings somebody in, we accept them in.
Larry?
Yeah, you indicated that you've been close to full up. What's the closest you've come to that 60 beds?
60.
Yeah, I think 48. We do have, we have a family and a few women staying with us. but majority of all men, they have been staying with us.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Oh, wait, yes.
One question, Major. How big a refrigeration unit do you need? Or what would be ideal?
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 Oh, goodness, you're hoping that. A double door? I mean, if you tell me something, I'd be, something you could just open, stick their drinks and their foods in there overnight. I'm not picky, okay? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Howdy Johnston. I'm a, I live at 2136 River Valley Lane. I own multiple commercial residential properties here in town and we do a lot of work to help try to beautify the city. And my issue today is I own the property on North Bryant between Eleventh Street and Fourteenth Street. We have a huge homeless problem across the street, as I'm sure everyone in this room is aware of. The issue is I don't know where to go or who to talk to about this issue. The police have been outstanding in helping us, you know, when we do have issues. But the environmental concerns I have over there right now are extremely bad. We can smell the feces and the urine blowing across Bryant, you know, all in the surrounding areas, not to mention that the river is running right through there. And so there's a lot of environmental concerns we've had over there. I used to have a property over on Twenty-Ninth Street that was also on the river and we had the same issues there. And we ended up selling the property because of the theft and drugs and environmental issues that were going on over there. So I would love to work with somebody like the Salvation Army, work with the city, you know, anything we can do to help solve this issue. But I have people that lease these properties from me and like across from that area right now are storage buildings, you know, and they're nice, they're clean. We worked with the city to get everything, trees planted, make it look, you know, beautiful over there. And they've been really good renters for us for a long time. Just the other day, the owner was checking his buildings before he went home for the weekend and there was a man in there and he politely asked him to get out. The man kicked a cup of urine and feces all over him and this is, it's just unacceptable. And again, the police have been outstanding in helping us, but we need, we need to do something about it. I don't know if the man who owns the property there is getting fined or, you know, what's going on with that. I know it's a humane issue and understand, but I just wanted to address it with the city council and, you know, if y'all can steer me in any, any direction that would help solve this issue, it would be greatly appreciated.
We will follow up with Bob Solis, Mr. Martinez, maybe Michael Dane. We will try to address that issue specifically, but there is a homeless coalition. We perhaps can utilize that commission as well. And I just want to say it looks like you brought some tremendous support with you this morning.
I did, I did, yes, ma'am.
She looks like she's giving you all the backbone you need.
Yes, ma'am.
Brenda?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Johnston. I think Rick and I worked at one point in time, there was some requirements that they needed for the facility where the portable buildings are for sale there.
Yes, sir.
How often do they get into those buildings?
I would say in a seven-day week, it's probably at least minimum four times a week. The guy who owns it has cameras, security cameras in the area. We pay for AEP lights, you know, to light the thing up to try to deter that. But windows broken out, they break into his office, they break into the buildings, they leave needles, pipes, you know, all the, all the trash, everything over there. It's a constant battle and I'm going to lose a source of my income possibly from this if it continues and we don't figure out some way to solve this issue.
Okay, and that's, it's what amazed me as I started to hear that it's probably almost fifty times a month you've got broken windows or broken doors.
Absolutely. It's at least seventy percent of the month, for sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Evelyn Smith, SMD5. And the end of last year, Gessenemy Church was here and put in an application for nonprofit organization funding and it was passed unanimously by the tiers program, but when we submitted to the city council, everybody voted yes on it except for two people, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was Mayor and Mr. Thompson. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thompson, you did say you would reconsider it if we would put a cap on the seventy-five thousand dollar cap we already have right now, that you reconsider it. And when I talked to the tiers board, they said they did submit a request to the city council whether you guys were going to consider that or not. And so that's my question. Has there been any consideration about that or any decision on putting a cap on the nonprofit organization?
So I will, I will say, I was one of those voters that I've been against nonprofits getting money out of tiers. That went back to the tiers board. They brought us a proposition to change how the tier structure was and we left the tier structure exactly as it is, if I remember that right. We had no changes to our tier structure. So there's no changes in the programs.
Will there be a reconsideration for it? What do we need to do to have you reconsider that?
Well, I think these things come to me as policy to vote on. That would start with the tiers board and work back up through them. Is that correct, Heather, Teresa?
That is correct.
And from what I understand, they have submitted something to you all and heard nothing back. So that's my question too.
No, we voted on everything that's come to us, Evelyn.
You have? Okay.
Thank you very much, Evelyn. Further public comment?
Yes? I just wanted to...
Speak louder and in the microphone.
Sorry, I was trying to pull up my notes. I just wanted to announce that the filing period for the May 4th Chief of Police election does open tomorrow, January 17th. The filing period will close on Friday, February 16th at 5:00 p.m. Those who are interested in running can submit their applications to the city clerk's office at 72 West College and applications are available online at costa-tx.us or they can pick up a application in the city clerk's office as well. The last day to register to vote is April 4th and I think that's all.
Thank you. Further public comment? Jackie, do you have a separate item?
I forgot to hand you all, this is the list of all the city parks and all the county parks and there are fifty-nine city parks and thirty-eight county parks.
I'll take it, Jackie. Thank you.
Any further public comment or announcements? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of this agenda and we will move into the consent agenda. As usual, I will ask each of the city council members to see if there's any item that they would like to have pulled for discussion and I will start with Larry. E, okay. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
With that, we will take a vote on all of the consent agenda items with the exception of E. So may I have a motion for approval of all items except for E? So moved by Harry? Seconded by Larry. Any public comment concerning any of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of item E? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the consent agenda with the exception of item E has passed seven to zero. Item E is considered approving change order number seven and change order number eight to ES-01-21 Southwest Boulevard Improvements Project with Reese Albert Incorporated in the total amount of ninety-one thousand, ninety-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, utilizing project contingency and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, you're on for Larry's questions or comments?
I just wanted to publicly thank Patrick and Shane for the work that they did on that crossing down there by McDonald's. It's working just as it's supposed to work. I think most of us have forgotten about the barricades used to go up when a rainstorm came through. We don't have to worry about that anymore. On top of that, you're doing some refinement to the project that's down there where you see there's some things that need to be done, like those doggone rails that I asked for. Thank you very much, Patrick.
Yes, sir. I don't know if I want to make a comment after that.
I'd even like that, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, with that, Larry, do you want to make a motion to approve item E?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion. May I have a second? Seconded by Tommy. Public comment on item E. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor of approving item E, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing all yays or ayes, the motion passes seven to zero. We will now move into our regular agenda. We will, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first item is considered a resolution of support for the proposed development of the Bergman Heights Senior Affordable Housing located at SEQ Petro Drive and Ben Ficklin Road as part of the 2024 Annual Low Housing Tax Credit, L-I-H-T-C Affordable Housing Program for KCG Bergman Heights. And Bob, you are on.
Good morning, Council again. KCG Bergman Heights LP is the second nine percent proposed low-income housing tax credit proposal asking for a resolution of support. The project is a forty-four-unit apartment complex on Ben Ficklin and unfortunately, the presenter, Mr. CJ Linter, is stuck in Colorado. His flight was canceled, so he won't be here this morning to present. I'll go through the slides and hopefully be able to encourage you to support this. And I think this is the main one right here. It is forty-four units over there near Ben Ficklin. It is new construction. It's going to be a three-story elevator designed, served design. And you can see the investment is relatively large for San Angelo, fourteen million dollars. Again, it's competing for the nine percent, which is very competitive across the, across the country, especially here in Texas.
Is that competitive in, in our district only? So are they applying for this region or do they have to compete nationally?
They, they compete for the region. And for us, happens to be Midland, Odessa, and San Angelo. So again, they have projects as well. In fact, we have one, we have two projects here in San Angelo competing for that. And in the past, council has approved, approved them all and hopefully that one of them will succeed. And this is the second of the, of the two here locally. And I can't, I'm not sure what else to tell you about this. I think this is a timeline. Basically, they do offer those in July sometime. At that point, we'll know whether they get it or not. And then if they do get it, they'll be able to, they have two years to start. Then there's a, there's a timeline for completion as well. You can, I think that's it.
You want to go back over what the mission of this forty-four units is in terms of who they're, who will benefit from this new construction?
This, I believe it's elderly, for which is sixty and older. I guess much-needed elderly support for affordable housing. As you know, if you look at the, at our demographics, it's one of the shortfalls here in San Angelo. So again, it's helping, it's helping meet some of the critical needs.
I agree. Yes, Tom?
So Bob, yes, there is a shortage for, let's say, senior rental housing in here. Is this the only thing that keeps us from gaining more? Is this tax credit?
No, absolutely not. There's just one, one arrow in the quiver, if you will. It's one tool in the toolbox that we use. It's attractive because there's, it's not a lot of cost to the city. In fact, there's no cost to the city itself. So it's, it's, we like it because it provides seed money for projects in our neighborhoods and the targeted neighborhoods, which are hard to find, unfortunately. But no, it could be private sector is, can do if they want to. We don't, we don't have any other programs though, unfortunately, for, for us, anyway.
Got you, all right, thank you.
Karen?
Can you inform us, please, if, whether or not current zoning supports this project?
Who does?
Current zoning in this area, does it support the project of this?
It does, it does. In fact, they went to our planning department exactly for that, so they are.
It's just not called out in our paperwork.
No, it's, it's, I believe it's okay.
Other questions? Comments? Then may I have a motion for approval? Motion to approve. Tommy makes a motion and Lucy is seconding that motion. Any public comment on this item A? Jackie?
My comment on this is, yes, this is definitely a need in this community. My, my other comment is that though you say it's not a cost to the city, the city facilities, the sewer and the water and the utilities are all going to have to be supplied by the city. And I go to my former questions of, is the city prepared to supply the services to these facilities coming in while lovely and has a lot of people, you're fixing to add a big old fat load to the sewer, the water, and the utilities right here in the smack in the middle of town? And while you're zoned for that, are you prepared for that? And where's the backup showing you've got that? Because we're adding lots and lots of load. And the elderly are our new poor, particularly elderly women, and we need these facilities and we need them to be accessible, which is another problem we have in this town is accessibility. Those are my questions back to the city as we decide to approve these projects. Are y'all ready to provide the things you're supposed to provide? The city water, sewer, and utilities so these operations can come in and do what they need to do?
We stay very much on top of capacity of sewer and water. That is an ongoing conversation and this council has made great strides in terms of making sure we have longevity in terms of water supply. And with our new Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project, we are ensuring that sewer capacity is up for future growth for many decades to come. So we're excited to have this project. We know there's a need. And I would ask if there's any further public comment concerning this item. Seeing none, we will take a vote. Those in favor of approving item A, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing seven ayes, we will consider that approved, seven to zero. We will move to item B, which is discussion and direction related to the Community Accessibility and Connectivity Project, grant award and related projects. And Patrick, you're back on. And I'm sure Shane Hilton's back there somewhere, support.
All right, good morning again, Mayor, Council. We are very proud this morning to get this opportunity to present this, this special project, this special project and this special award to you guys. Back early of last year, the city put, was, TechStop opened up an application for the transportation alternative set-aside grant or the TA set-aside grant. This is a grant that the city utilized on Chadburn Phase A to do some of the sidewalk improvements along that stretch and the pedestrian improvements along there. So you can kind of see what kind of impact this grant was. It was an opportunity that the city did not want to pass up again and so we sat together, we sat down and we looked at that funding opportunity that TechStop, or that grant opportunity that TechStop put out. Like I said, it's, this is a grant that is administered by TechStop. It was a competitive grant that they had three hundred and forty-five million dollars to allocate to different municipalities throughout Texas. And one of the caveats of this grant is it can only be used And one of the caveats of this grant is it can only be used for pedestrian and bicycle amenities, as well as the engineering design for those projects. So it can't do anything that street unless it has a benefit toward one of those two, pedestrian or bicycle improvements. When we sat down and we became aware of the three different categories for this particular grant, and the amount of funding that was available in each of those categories, it became very clear that we really needed to put together a project that could compete well. And I say that because in the largest funding category for this, where the TechDOT had put most of the funds, it was, we were competing with municipalities that were over 200,000 in population. So the Austins, the Fort Worth, the Dallas, the Houston's, the San Antonio's, those big metroplex corridor areas that really frankly get a lot of grant funding. I mean, their population, their density really allows that opportunity for them. So we sat down a staff and we realized that we had to put together a project that was pretty amazing if we were going to compete against the likes of those kind of municipalities. And so we did. And we came up with what we called the Community Accessibility and Connectivity Project. Sorry, I went back one. The Community Accessibility and Connectivity Project, or the CACP is what we call it for short. And if you'll notice in that title, there's some key words within that. Community, accessibility, and connectivity. That was the goals of our project when we were putting this together. We wanted a project that really connected all of our community to various parts throughout town and provided an accessible means for everybody to make that path and to get to those different areas. So part of the, part of the criteria of the grant, or the scoring criteria of it, TechDOT was going to look at project readiness. How quickly could you turn that project around? They were going to look at the impact to disadvantaged areas and what the project could do for those particular areas. They were going to look at the community benefit of it, the overall benefit to the community as a whole. And then two of the big scoring criteria was your community support and your competitive partnerships. We were lucky enough to work with a few entities, key entities throughout town, including downtown San Angelo Inc., the San Angelo Bicycle Association, and St. Mark Presbyterian Church, who all gave us letters of support for our grant application. And I think these, these three entities' support was huge in getting us a good score within that category. The other thing that was a little unique within this project was they really emphasized community partnerships in this grant. And so when we sat down and we pulled the project together, one of the, one of the entities that the project was touching was ASU. And so we sat down with, with that group over there, and they were extremely open to partnering with the city. And it was a great conversation from the word go. And what was, basically what it, what it ended up being is they gave us not only a monetary contribution, but also pedestrian easement granted to the city at no cost to the city to allow for the project to go along their campus. So, and I'll go more into that here in a little bit. We also talked to Shannon Medical Center, who gave us a monetary contribution for the part of the project that's going to be touching their facilities downtown as well. So those are two huge competitive partnerships that I think, again, gave us a leg up on our competition in this grant. So ultimately, we're proud to say that in October of 2023, the Texas Transportation Commission awarded COSA one of the 83 projects that was awarded by the commission on that day. So we were extremely fortunate to get an $18.7 million grant out of the $343,000 to provide a connectivity trail throughout San Angelo. Like I said, it was one of 83 projects that was awarded, and in that, we were the second highest award amount out of all of those 83. So technically, out of the 312 applications that were submitted to TechDOT in this grant opportunity, asking for $1.4 billion, COSA got the second highest award amount out of all of those applications. So, and I emphasize that because I'm very, very proud of that project that our team put together, the application that our team put together, and that we were successful in that application.
Hey, Patrick, that deserves an applause, man. Thank you for doing that wonderful job on that.
I think the fact that it was the second highest dollar award given, and our competitors, as we know, have consistently always won, and we've kind of been left out, the fact that we qualified for this dollar amount against those competitors tells me that you and your team of people put together an unbelievable strategic plan that met all the obligations that the grant was asking for us to meet and that obviously this city had a need for. It's, I just, I mean, I just, I celebrate. This is fantastic.
Man, it's actually, I think it's actually the highest competitive grant the city of San Angelo's ever received. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, it is the largest construction grant that the city has ever received. So we're very happy about that. And again, just to emphasize, I mean, we were competing with people like Dallas and Houston, Austin, San Antonio, San Marcos, I mean, some big players in this game. And for us to come out where we did on that, I think it's a testament to, to the work that we, that our team and everybody put together on this. So let's talk about the project itself. Ultimately, we knew that we had to shoot for the stars. We knew we had to put together a project that was pretty amazing. And so I'm going to try to outline it on this, on this as I kind of walk you through the scope of this project. So it really starts at Avenue L here, and it goes, and it makes that connection from Avenue L down to the river and provides those pedestrian amenities there. We jump across, Chaburn Phase A is complete, so we're going to tie into that Chaburn Phase A, and we're going to finish that little project downtown to the Loop. Then we're going to continue on all the way down Chaburn Street to 29th Street. So you can kind of start getting a feel for the different neighborhoods this thing is connecting, the different areas that it's connecting to. We're going to pull across on 29th Street and come across to Edmund, Glenna, all the way down to the Loop again. Move across the Loop down to Arden Road, continue down Arden Road, across Sherwood Way, down Avenue N to the College at Johnson Street, and then we're going to connect Johnson Street from Avenue N down to Knickerbocker. We also have a little leg here that's going to connect right here by the City Hall Annex and go down Borregard and connect to Shannon down that Loop. So what, sorry. Oh, where did I go? There we go. How do I clear all that off? Maybe they can help me in the back. What this does is it ties in to not only, everyone's well aware of the TechDOT work that they've been doing along their roadways with the sidewalks and the accessibility improvements along there. So we really wanted to maximize that investment, as well as kind of strategically tie into their money by asking for their, some more of their money with our project. So you'll see that this thing really does that. It connects the medical districts to downtown, to schools, to parks, shopping centers, restaurants, grocery stores, and ASU and those higher education facilities. So again, it provides that connectivity for not only one certain piece of San Angelo, but all the way through San Angelo and the different neighborhoods throughout those corridors. And it's very important for us to, to say that we put together 11.4 miles of sidewalk that's going to go into this project, in addition to 2.3 miles of shared use path, which a shared use path is a path that's wide enough to both bicycle on and walk on at the same time. So that's a total of 13.7 miles of improvements in the city. It's something that I feel like we would have never accomplished without this opportunity. So I think this is a huge project for the city. It's going to benefit the entire city as a whole, and that's really what we wanted to do, is impact as many people in as many communities and in many neighborhoods as we possibly could with this project. Like I said, one of the big pieces of this was the accessibility portion of it. It does improve pedestrian crossings with, you've seen the hawk signal on Sherwood, on Southwest to help those kids cross the road there. You're going to see some more of those come out. Those key areas down, like down by the soccer fields, are going to see some of those that have high pedestrian traffic trying to cross over by Kirby Park downtown. Some of those key areas is going to have improvements to all of those, help cross safely or cross those roadways, as well as, you know, ramps and everything else that the, our handicap community needs as well. Let's talk about timing of the project, and I'm going to go off of, we attended a webinar with TechDOT to kind of spelled out some little preliminary information about this. And these timings are coming strictly from that webinar. So in six to nine months, we have to sign an AFA with TechDOT, basically an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT that starts the project, says we're going to pay for our local contribution side and what TechDOT's going to pay for, just spells out the terms of the, of the grant. After that, we can start work on the design. Again, that engineering design is a reimbursable cost, so we don't want to start any of that until after the AFA is signed. And that, they're expecting that to take 12 to 18 months. I think that's a little conservative. I think we can, we can push that ahead a little bit, but again, I'm going to go off of their numbers and be conservative here. And then within 30 months from that AFA execution is when they're expecting construction to So let's talk about the funding of this project. This grant is an 80/20 match, meaning 80% of the project is going to be paid for by TechDOT funds, and 20% is going to be paid for by city funds. So what that means is 18.7 is TechDOT, $4.7 million is what the, what the city needs to pay for. In addition to this money, there is a portion of the project that has to be constructed in coordination with the street repair, or the street project, street rehabilitation project. It just, it's not feasible to do this as a separate standalone thing. So in total, what we need for this project to make it happen is $10.5 million to make it all work. We've identified some funding allocations to do that, and you see that there on your screen. That ASU partnership contribution, you know, again, I said ASU stepped up. I didn't tell you by how much. $400,000 is what they're contributing to this project. So again, an amazing partnership with, with that group over there. And that Shannon also contributed $25,000 for the portion that's touching their, their particular facility downtown. We have, one of the key portions of this project was it ran along projects that we were already working on. Edmund, Glenna, 29th Street, some of those, Chaburn Street. Some of those projects that we already had funding allocated to for pedestrian improvements. So instead of paying for $1.1 million and just getting that, I'm essentially getting, you know, five times that amount out of this, out of that same money. So we were able to maximize those bond funds of $1.1 million, use that as a, as a matching portion of the grant and to help eat away at that 10.5. Chaburn Phase A contingency that we didn't use, when we allocated that Phase A contingency, council requested that we take any remaining contingency and we apply it to Phase B. So that's what we're doing here with that $928,000. The ARPA funds are available at $5.6 million. There's some bond interest revenue from the street improvement bonds that we had of $1.4 million. And then we're hoping to get in front of the tiers board here shortly and present to them. They had made a statement back when we were talking to them in the past that if we found some grant monies or a project, that they'd be willing to help contribute to that, but they didn't want to pay for improvements outright, but they were willing to help maximize any grant opportunity. And so we have that opportunity now, so we just need to get in front of them and make that request toward, to them and see what they'd be willing to, to support in this project. So ultimately, without knowing what tiers is willing to do, we're about a million dollars short on this, to come up with that, that full funding amount. So that's kind of where I'm standing in front of you guys today to see if there's any additional direction. I think we kind of have it spelled out pretty well here, and we can make up that million dollars fairly easily. But any suggestions, ideas, comments from council is what we're here today to get y'all's discussion and direction on.
Number one, I want to make one comment, and that is, is if I take a look at the total amount that TechDOT has given us, the 18.7 million, and add this 10.5 million, we would end up getting a project, multiple projects for about $29 million, of which today, there's not funding for $29 million worth of projects in any of our budget or infrastructure chunks of money. So the impact of this is huge. The impact on multiple areas of town is huge, so we're not focusing on a single entity. We're talking about a community as a whole. We constantly talk about connectivity, ADA accessibility, our ability to address some of these issues that have not been addressed over years, as we've not done these kinds of projects. Most importantly, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for listening to these webinars, because I know one of the great ways that you, one of the big ways that you end up getting these grants is by listening to the language and the things that they're specifically targeting these grants. And you listened, and you made the grant applicable to the key issues that were important to TechDOT. So you guys did a tremendous job of executing this. Really, really proud of the team.
Thank you.
That put this together. So I'm tremendously supportive of what you've put together. I think it's a great plan. It's the first time we've ever had this kind of an award given to us, and I think our support and vote to support you is hugely important based off of what you've just said. Other comments, questions from city council? Do I have, oh, Larry?
The shortfall on tiers, are their funds available with them, where their pot of money?
Again, that's, that's what we need to work with, Aaron, and that, that group that's managing those tiers funds to really work for. Most of the project that we're going to be asking for falls in this north side tiers area. So we, we did have our consultants look at what the benefit or the, the cost of those improvements along that north side is. If you look at the 20% of that, it well exceeds, the, the cost of the project well exceeds what this million dollars would be. So the matching portion of those improvements would be this north, would be the million dollars, which is kind of what we're anticipating asking tiers for. Again, I don't know what they're willing to do, but from what I understand within those budgets, that there's a possibility there. And again, we don't necessarily have to do it all within this funding cycle. It can be over a course of a couple of years. If you saw the timing there, 30 months, we do have some opportunity there to kind of spread this out and lessen that impact all at once.
Further questions, Tom?
Yeah, if you don't want. Patrick, I mean, this is a great thing. It connects a lot of what we're looking for. Does that deplete our ARPA funds?
From what I understand, that is the full balance of what's left in the ARPA.
That's all the balance of the ARPA. And I'll bring up this, this is the discussion at this point, but the financing for the million, you know, needs to come back, and we'll see different parts of that. But on the tiers, you know, I'm, I have some concerns about that as far as it affects both sides and how we go through and how we pay it out and how we pay it back. Glad to see it coming, but I was just really curious about the ARPA funds.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from council? May I have, yes, please.
I am so excited. You did great. And 11.4 miles of sidewalk is exciting as well, but I don't see my sidewalk on there. So are we still working on that?
I've got a plan for you.
Okay. As long as I'm still on your mind. But thank you so much for your hard work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I think what we are, we are saying is move forward. Do you need a vote of support for your presentation today?
I don't think I need a vote. I just need a direction.
We're not voting today. We're giving directions. But I think there's a thumbs up on the expenditures, where we're going to find the money to do it, and we will work hard and aggressively to come up with that million dollars that you're short. But we've got time to do it, and we don't want to hesitate in terms of giving you the support. And go for it.
So I do want to say, while I get the privilege of standing up here speaking, the rest of our team is attending a six-hour webinar today in conjunction with this, so.
You spent the time that, that was needed to get the award, and that is key. These webinars on these grants are big points when you end up applying.
It is it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Patrick.
Item C, discussion and review of Chapter Eight, Article 8.10, Parking Vehicles on Unimproved Service of the Code of Ordinances. And Bob, you're on.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I think there's a request for public comment on that last item.
Oh, so sorry. Since we didn't have a motion.
All items on the agenda, even if they're not actually?
Perfect. Open for public comment. Thank you.
On this, if you want to put the map back up, first of all, I think this is a lovely thing to get done. It kind of reminds me back of the day when we did the Paseo, and we worked with LCRA and all those people and got lots of all this done for the walking and the ADA and making our community tied all together and lovely. So I think that's a great idea. My question on this and comment on this as well is who directly is going to manage? My question on this and comment on this as well is who directly is going to manage this large amount of money? And how it will be managed and how it will be decided what and how these things are done? I see you're going to get engineering done, and that's great, but who directly is going to manage this huge budget for this city to see that things are not incorrectly done? And then my other question is, is part of this budget for the city and all of our things like this, and ADA compliance, and putting in things for ADA as far as hearing and seeing and all those things on our facilities, is there money in this budget, or will there be money in this budget for maintenance of these things? Because that's important too, because we're adding these things, we need to keep them in good shape. As part of this, could we see that added in there possibly?
No, we can't.
Okay, we cannot. That's not why.
This is building, this isn't maintenance.
Okay, this is building, okay. Very good, and so can y'all tell me?
We'll deal with the maintenance issues as we do every year in the budget session.
Okay, and so who do I talk with about that?
The maintenance thing?
Uh huh.
Well, first of all, we haven't even built it yet. So worrying about the maintenance of it when we haven't even been done.
Well, that's when you worry about it. Anyway, yes, ma'am, and so who's going to manage this?
Patrick, would you like to come forward?
So I keep referring to our team, and, and that's a big, a big part of this. It's obvious that a project of this scale is not, should not be assigned to a single person, and we do not want it to be assigned to a single person due to the risk of that. So we have multiple people that's going to be on this team, from overall project manager to somebody that's overseeing the budget side, to somebody that's overseeing the reporting and the compliance side of it, inspectors that are going to be working on the ground to make sure everything is going in correctly and that all the daily reporting is being done correctly. Again, that's part of the trainings that we're going through, and that's part of that team that we're developing and making sure that this is going through. So these are all things that we've talked about already, getting in, in preparation for the actual construction side of this. So we're going to have multiple people watching over this thing, just to make sure it is successful, and I want to ensure y'all that, and I, I kind of want to throw a bone to, to council real quick, because last year, y'all allowed us to hire a grant administrator. Y'all added a position for that, and I think that's what you're seeing here is that fruition of that. So she is not only instrumental in, in this application process, but she's also going to be instrumental in that compliance and the reporting side of it that makes sure that we do get reimbursed on all of this, so.
Thank you. Yes, Eric.
Since Patrick brought up the, this managing these particular thing, this may be a large grant, but this is not the largest project this city has ever done.
Oh, I know that.
We have people every day that look at all these things.
It's what I do for a living, I'm quite aware of that. That's why I'm asking the question. But 29 million to come in and correct these things is a lot of money, and I just want to make sure it's managed correctly. As a public citizen, this is my tax dollars. That's all I'm asking the question of.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further public comment on this item? All right, well, then that will complete the discussion of item B, and we will now move into item C. We'll welcome Bob back up here.
Yeah.
All right, so today's the discussion review of Chapter Eight, Article 8.10, parking vehicles on unimproved surface of the Code of Ordinances.
Yes, I think council requested a review of the ordinance dealing with parking on unimproved surfaces. That's our, Chapter Eight, Article 8.10, prohibits parking in the yard in the residential zoned area with some exceptions. The two main exceptions are on an improved surface such as concrete, asphalt, caliche, or paving bricks, and the other one, if it's screened from public view with a solid or peak fence or wall at least six, six feet tall and conforming to the zoning, zoning ordinance. However, there are other additional exceptions. One is the, is recreational trailers or semi-trailers and RVs. They do, they must conform to setback requirements, which is 10 feet from the edge of the street, excluding the neck of the trailer. Parking in the rear yard if the rear boundary is not adjacent to a, a street right of way. If the street is 36 feet or less in width. If it has a valid handicap license plate or a mirror hanger. And if the street is wider than 36 feet, residents without a driveway but with a curb cut for a driveway, with or without a garage or carport, they can park perpendicular to the residence within the boundaries created by the curb cut. And lastly, the other exception is residents without a curb cut can, they can park perpendicular to the street on other side of the residence. Here's a picture, example of a vehicle parking in the rear yard. Here's an example of a vehicle parking in the front yard because the street is less than 36 feet wide, and notice that they do not have to park perpendicular to the residence. They can park across. Here's an example of a vehicle parking perpendicular to the residence where there is a curb cut and a carport of a not an improved surface. They can park perpendicular into the, the boundary of the curb cut. Here's another example of a vehicle parking perpendicular to the residence on an unimproved surface without a carport or garage and with a curb cut.
And all of these are legit? In other words, the ordinance allows?
Yes.
All of these things that you're showing pictures of, is that correct?
That is correct. That's what's allowed. Here's an example of a parking on the side of the residence due to the curb with, they don't have a curb cut, and because of that, they can park on the side of the residence. And lastly, here's an example of a car parking on the side of the residence, again, in this case, there is a curb, but there's no curb cut. So the question is, how do they get onto the property? Well, if there's no curb cut, and there's a curb, and there's your property, you've got to jump the curb, fortunately. And the last slide I've got here is, this is the code enforcement process. The first thing our officers do, they check the GIS map for the width of the street. Next, the officer will inspect the property and issue a violation, a notice of violation if necessary. The violator has seven days to comply, and that allows five days mailing time for a total of 12 days. And then the officer will conduct a follow-up inspection, and they may grant extensions if requested, and if things are moving right along, they, they, they can do that. If not, they will file a criminal complaint for non-compliance. And now we'll be glad to ask you any questions or make comments.
My first question is, on all of these exceptions and all of the photographs that you have shown, were all of those cars or vehicles, did they all have license plates?
If, that's a different question, actually. If it doesn't have a license plate, you can have a car on your property without a license plate if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet a junk vehicle description. On the street, they cannot. At that point, the PD will get involved with that.
So all vehicles on the street must have a license plate?
That is correct, my understanding.
Are there a limitation, are there limitations to the number of vehicles allowed on a residence or unimproved or improved driveway?
No.
There's no limitations to the number?
There's no, there's no number.
So a person could have in their front yard and parking up to 12 vehicles that all have license plates, and it would be legal? So what is the difference between that and what one would call maybe, I don't want to use the word junkyard, but, because it's not, but it is a huge amount of vehicles on a property?
We do check for junk and unsightly. This would be, since there are no limitations on the ordinance, we could potentially be selling cars, that's a different issue. That is a zoning problem, and we get involved on that side of the issue, of the equation. We get involved to make sure that they're not selling vehicles.
But if they're repairing vehicles for the future sale?
And that's, again, that gets into the junk vehicle ordinance, which is a little bit different, but they can, you can fix your car. However, you have, if it shows indication of it that it is junked, in other words, if the, if the engine's on the side, has been there for more than 30 days, that you start looking at a junk vehicle situation.
So all vehicles must be in running condition, so?
They must not meet the junk vehicle description, okay? We can't make you move your car, because it's sitting there, because you can sit there for a year. We don't care if you move it or not. But if your car starts showing that it's looking like a junk vehicle, the tires are off, it's on jacks, part of the vehicle is on the side, the engine, transmission's on the side, big oil spots, then we start looking at a junk vehicle situation.
Because these are the issues that I get many phone calls on and complaints about, are the multiple vehicles that don't seem to be in working order and have been on someone's yard or driveway or street for extended period of time with the knowledge that the vehicles are not in running condition or usable.
But we won't know that if it doesn't, we don't know if it doesn't run until it starts showing signs of, of a junk vehicle. In other, in other words, you can have a, like I said, if it, you can have an ugly car. We don't, we don't legislate or control aesthetics. People can have red cars.
I like red, yeah, I like red.
So as we look at your car, we do have to make sure that, again, there's, there's a criteria, and I have, I have my supervisor here, my co-compliance supervisor can get to details if you need that, but that's a whole different part of the, of the, of the, of the ordinance. Today, we're just going to talk about parking on the front yard. How many can we do, and who can, who's allowed, and that kind of thing, so.
Well, I know that I'm just one of many city council members who get constant phone calls and complaints, so Karen, Larry, who would like to go on first?
I have one house that had nine cars around it. A truck that the registration was from 2020, just sitting there. My major complaint is a visibility problem. Neighbors shouldn't have to look at a car lot next to their, their house. Not sure we have the answer for that problem yet.
Well, one thing they could do is they can put it behind an opaque fence and keep it out of the public view. That's one way of handling it. And again, if it's in the backyard, for example, they, they can do that. They can have a vehicle in the backyard. So that's, that's unfortunate, but you can't have multiple cars on your, on your property if you meet the ordinance. I know it's not the best solution, and, but we do look at it, we always look to see if there's a junk car view situation. We do check for all the things that I just mentioned earlier.
Karen?
I'll just vote with Larry on this, metaphorically speaking. The abundance of complaints that I hear from citizens that are distressed because they don't want to look at that.
Right.
They are not the perpetuator of the problem, they are the witness to the problem. And they appear to have no particular recourse, at least that's how they feel. So if you could advise this body and the public listening and watching what people might do to not waste your time and to, and to also make a productive complaint that might lead to resolution for the visual concerns that they have, we'd appreciate it.
We always encourage citizens to call us. Let's, really should do that. Call us, let's take a look at it, because you never know what you, what you've got until our officers go out there. They're, they're trained, they're certified, they've been doing this for a long time. They can, they'll go out there and take a look and see if, in fact, it meets the criteria for our actions. Unfortunately, a lot of times, they do not. They're, and they just meet the criteria. Now, can council change that? Absolutely. You can change the ordinance to eliminate the 35-foot width criteria, but then you have a bunch of cars on the street where narrow vehicle, narrow streets, and there will be no way to, to get around. Like you do in Fort Worth and some places.
Well, since you brought that up, so then the question mark would be, I have six cars, my driveway, I don't want cars in my front yard, and I only have room for two in my driveway, may I park the rest of those cars in front of other people's homes legally?
Yes.
So you can use the street for any amount of parking for any amount of vehicles that you have, not just your curb or the curb in front of your house and the parking attached to it? Would that be correct?
You can park, first come, first served on the street. You cannot block a driveway, but if you're not blocking a driveway, you can park your car anywhere on the street. It's, that's, doesn't have any, no parking signs, so, yeah. You can park in somebody's, in front of somebody's house, yeah.
Lucy?
Do y'all issue very many tickets?
Do we issue a lot of tickets?
Because violations.
Yeah, violations. Do you issue a lot of violations on this?
I'm not sure what many would be. Let me have Mr. Hibara come up and see if he can answer that question.
Should we define many? So many's from zero to 10? And then many plus is 11 to 20, or?
So you want to know how many? Oh, my name's Rudy Hibara with Code Compliance. So what was your question on?
Rudy, I just wanted to know as far as the, about citations that y'all issue, how many do you do a month for parking?
As far as complaints, well, we don't get very many complaints about that, about parking on improved, so maybe a handful a month. Citations, we may have had in the past year, maybe three or four. And what I mean by citations, we file criminal complaints.
Okay. On trailers, are trailers, repeat this for me again, please, because I forgot the slide. Are trailers allowed to park on the street with no license plate?
I'm going to say no.
No, a license plate allows you to park on the, on the street, but a trailer's by itself unattached is not allowed to be parked in the street.
Are construction trailers allowed to be parked on the street as a work vehicle with a license, with no license plate or with a license plate?
Again, this may be a PD issue, a question, because it may be a traffic violation, but the rule doesn't allow, or the code does not allow for any unattached trailer to be parked in the street.
Harry?
Hey, Bob, you're probably going to get inundated with phone calls, you and Rudy. I can tell you, this is a problem all over the city. Now, I'm glad that Larry asked for clarification on this, because we need to educate some of our constituents exactly what. But I think there's a possibility that we really need to look at this particular ordinance and junk vehicle ordinance, simply because we have multiple families living in one house today, which is probably what happened 50, 60 years ago. But right now, so now you've got a number of vehicles that are parked. But we really need to take a look at this, because neighborhoods are starting to look really junky because of the number of vehicles that are parked there. Trailers that are on properties, you know, we really need to be looking at whether or not there's even people maybe living in some of these particular trailers. You and I conversed before council meeting today about one that's actually in Lucy's neighborhood, but it's in my neighborhood. I mean, Lucy's area, but it's in my neighborhood, so I, I always take a look at these things. But we really, this community is starting to look really junky, you know, a lot of different areas. So if we can change the ordinance, is there ways that we can, and make, make these, clean up some of these neighborhoods? I sure would like to do that.
Tom?
So my question, Bob, let's, I'll go back to Rudy. I get a lot of phone calls about commercial vehicles parked in residential neighborhoods. And there'll be cattle trailers, stock trailers, there'll be plumbing companies, and they'll be in districts where they will park their personal vehi, I mean, it's their commercial vehicle that they drive during the day, but they'll bring that home and park it in front of their house. And it limits egress in and out of facilities. Can you bring a commercial vehicle and put it in a, basically an RS1 neighborhood and park it on the street?
I believe it's the size. Rudy, you want to come up here and help me out on this?
Yeah, poor Rudy.
Rudy wants to just stay in here.
He's the expert, so.
So I understand your question, right? You're asking about a commercial vehicle parked?
Commercial vehicles, I see them in my district all the time that will be parked on the street. You've got to move out and around them. But somebody that works at, say, for a specific company, whether that be, you know, electric, plumbing, whatever, they'll bring their work van home, and they drive it daily, they'll park it right in the middle of Catalina or wherever it might be. And is that legal to leave it there?
So again, this may be a traffic violation, may, may not. What is a commercial vehicle? A vehicle, a pickup truck with a commercial signage on it is not a commercial pickup truck with a commercial signage on it is not a commercial vehicle?
I have the ordinance if you'd like to hear that.
We just need to give it, I mean, out there, I'm with Harry and all of them. I mean, it's just, we're getting more and more vehicles stacked in everybody's yards. We know they're not using them. And people are educated. Those, we've worked on one there where they know that they get out and they roll it four feet forward. I don't think it has a motor in it, but they roll it four feet and change it just to say, hey, I moved it. I mean, I'll go with Harry. I'll look at anything to just try to clean some of these things up. I just, we're all tired of it being unsightly. There's another one that I'll bring up when we close the meeting day of something I want to go forward with as far as looking at new ordinance things to look at. But I mean, I'll get phone calls all the time. Somebody will park a truck, you know, in an 18-wheel truck in the middle of Green Acres and leave it there. They'll park a cattle trailer down there on the street. And we know those aren't legal and the person that purchased it said, well, it's my property. Well, whatever. But I'll go with Harry and the bunches. We need to clean it up.
Just a reminder, if it's in the street and if it's a commercial vehicle, Traffic Division of the Police Department may be able to help you. If it's on private property, we can help you.
Got you. Thank you, Rudy.
Would you please, Teresa, read the ordinance, the language, so we're all clear?
Yeah. A commercial vehicle is one that exceeds three and a half tons, that is designed, maintained, or used primarily for the non-recreational transportation of persons and people, is how it's defined. So it's the bigger vehicles. It shall be unlawful for any person to park a commercial vehicle, trailer, semi-trailer, pole trailer, truck trailer, a recreation vehicle on a street or lot in a residential district or on a street bordering a residential district with, looks like, a whole bunch of exceptions. If it's used for transporting, porting furniture and household goods while in the process of unloading or unloading, while in the process of loading or unloading other kinds of commercial goods, mobile homes, provided that their right to occupy the location appears affirmatively from other statutes. Trailer and semi-trailers used for recreational or homeowner utility purposes and recreational vehicles can be parked inside parking, outside parking in a side yard not adjacent to and parallel to a street, outside parking in a yearlap, rear yard, as long as the unit meets setback requirements of an accessory building. So you can see it's very complicated. It's not that easy. But basically, the answer is no unless they have a business purpose for being there.
Got it.
So an RV, so I have a large RV that I've just come home from a big trip. Am I allowed to park that in my driveway or on the street?
I'll have to read all these exceptions.
You actually can park it on the yard as one of the exceptions to this ordinance. What you cannot do is keep it plugged in and live in it. That's what you cannot do. And we get complaints on that. So when we go check, we check for, see if they have sewage, do they have water, do they have electricity? And you can have it for like 14 days to prepare your RV to go on a trip, but you can't have it continuously. So that's how we check to see if you're living on that. Of course, that is a violation. But you can't have your RV, you know, again, on your yard, say with a recreational trailer.
But there are a lot of setback requirements and very specific things that you would try to do.
Ten feet from the street.
Lucy?
So Bob, you can, can you have a trailer in the backyard and have it hooked up?
Yes.
You can.
Yes, you can.
She said live.
In the backyard, you can't have, right?
Can you live in it?
She's saying if you have a trailer, let's, you know.
Living in the trailer, no, 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 no. You cannot. I'm sorry. You cannot live in the trailer. You can use your trailer for recreational purposes.
And you can have a trailer in your backyard, but you cannot be living in it?
No, you cannot. I'm sorry.
You cannot. You could have an overnight camping trip in your backyard.
Yeah. Yeah, you can have it for the night, you know, with the kids.
You can have your in-laws come and live with you and you go, you can live in the RV.
Yeah, you cannot live in an RV in the backyard, no. Or in the front yard, anywhere.
So using a trailer, an RV, for temporary living purposes is okay. 14 days in a six-month period. After that, they're not allowed to live in it like an apartment.
So wait a minute. Excuse me, Brenda.
Oh, yes, please.
Let's talk about the one on 49. It's the worst one in the world. They have, what, six, five, five trailers sitting on there. It's an empty lot, no house.
So you're probably talking about Growth East Street?
Yep, that's the one.
Yeah, there's pending cases against that property owner. No. What she's doing there is not allowed by zoning ordinance or any other ordinance that we know of.
Right. But I, so I guess my frustration here, and we'll try to keep it short because we need to move on, but they've done this over two years. They've developed it. The people in that neighborhood, because of the people that reside in those campers, are probably not the best people to, or let's put it like, they say it's a drug deal. I mean, they say people are stopping there, short period of time, everything. But it's taken two years for us to finally get to this point. And I can only imagine how frustrating it would be to live on a street and it take this damn long to get it cleaned up. And when there's something that's that big of a violation, five RVs parked out there, camper trailers. And I'm, I get frustrated because the wives of the guys that are frustrated, they got my personal phone number and they have warned me out in two weeks. And I get it, but I'm just saying it took five years, you know, or basically to get to this point.
So this item is a discussion item where you can direct us, is it on, to make some changes to the ordinance, to look at some changes to the ordinance. We came specifically regarding the parking on the yard, which, you know, it expands into all these other issues of parking on the yard as well, all addressed by very different and convoluted ordinances. So one of the things that, it was Larry who requested that this item be brought forward. One of the concerns he initially raised to us was that people can park in the backyard and they don't have to shield the vehicles under our code. Is that something you would want to see? One of the things we discussed when we met last week, Rudy and Bob and I, was there's a little bit of confusion within the code itself as to this 36-foot wide street. Is that the only time we want people parking in their yard? Is if the street's not wide enough to park on the street? Or do we want them to be able to park in their yard even if the street's wider but have certain specific requirements? And when the street isn't 36 feet, do we want them to park in a certain way? Or is parking haphazardly, however they want to park, okay? I mean, those are the kinds of things. I think that one reason Bob brings up that they park however they want is that that adds to the look of the clutter when you have parks, cars just parked every which way. So those are kinds of the questions that we saw in the ordinance. Some of it, I think, does need to be clarified because Rudy doesn't, it's not very clear whether all of those requirements to park perpendicular and all of those things apply to streets that are less than 36 feet wide. So if you have any guidance, we're happy to take a stab at a new ordinance. If you want to leave it as it is and just understand that it's very convoluted and difficult to enforce the parking, whether it's Rudy doing it or whether it's PD, it's a very difficult situation. And there really is no place else for contractors often to park their vehicles, is what they tell us.
All right. So I would say the following is that we need to review this ordinance. And I would say we need to clarify some of the gray matter in it, if possible, because it seems like it's, anything can go kind of ordinance, and yet, so that's hard to enforce. I would say that based off of the number of complaints that perhaps you all have had, that you know the issues that are top of mind in terms of gray matter and too much leeway, if you will, not black and white enough. I'm going to ask each council member if there's something specifically they'd like to see included or changed in the ordinance so that we're clear as you work on amending the ordinance. Larry?
Yeah, I think it needs to be totally reworked, frankly. Sometimes even our laws step in and create conditions where we can't do what we'd like to do. The situation I had, five cars parked in the backyard, two of them blocking another vehicle that's parked under a shed. That's the one with the 2020 registration on it. It's impossible to see from the street what the other registrations are. Question is, do the enforcement people have the power to go across people's property to inspect those vehicles to see if they're currently registered? I don't think so.
We can get an administrative warrant to access property for that purpose.
Yeah, there is a process for that. But again, if it's, the vehicle's on your property, it does not have to be registered. You just can't be, it has to be registered to go on the street. Then you've got a problem. But you can have a car. If you have a personal car, it doesn't look like a junk vehicle, and it's intact, and it's just in your driveway, you can keep it there. Now, you can't use it for storage. You can't use it for some other things, but it's, how can we go around, you know, ensuring that everyone moves their car? We just can't do that. That's, that's kind of overreaching, I think. So we have to just kind of trust that it becomes a, as it starts moving towards a junk vehicle, then we can take action. Otherwise, if it's intact, it looks good, it's sitting in the driveway, old, hasn't moved because they don't want to register it. They could have reasons for it. It belonged to a mom that passed away and they just want to, not sure what they're going to do with the vehicle. They may go do those kind of things. So it's kind of problematic. But we could clean that up. I recommend that maybe let us go take a look at some ordinances across the state, see what looks good, some of your concerns. I'll try to, we'll work that out, and then we'll come back to council with a proposal and see if you guys want to, see if you want to maybe make some changes. That's, that would be my recommendation.
Should the focus be on cleaning up neighborhoods and give it more of an aesthetic look rather than what we're seeing at this point? So it's not so much what's in the backyard as far as registration, it's what it looks like.
What it looks like.
The front, where people come through. I mean, Harry, would that be safe to say that? That's a big concern, is the appearance of the front.
I like the opaque fence portion of it because the one that I'm talking about is right there on the corner. So anybody drives down that street is going to see this car lot.
And is there an interest in having people park in the street if the street is wide enough? Or are we okay with letting them park in their yards, depending, just regarding the width of the street?
Teresa, the biggest concern there would just be safety purposes, being able to make sure that we have a fire truck that can actually go through there if there's an emergency. So we'd have to take a look at that from the aspect of, is it safe enough to actually park there? So I think we'd have to take a look at the 36-foot width again and see if in fact, if you have vehicles parked on either side, can a fire truck go through there? So we're going to have to reevaluate. But again, looking at it from the perspective of aesthetics and how the neighborhood looks, I think that's probably going to be the primary concern.
Okay.
Any other thing?
I just wanted to make a statement. You know, talking about this, the width of the street, I know that on Avenue X where my aunt used to live, she, the street is so narrow that if a car's parked on one side, when you're trying to get out of your driveway, you have a really hard time because that car's parked there. And there was nothing they could do because they would say, no, they're allowed to park there. So that's, that's one of the problems I think they have in those residents where they do have real narrow streets.
So you, the ordinance could read something about unless it impedes someone else's ability to come in and out of their driveway, then that's, no one should not be able to get in and out of their driveway because of the number of cars or vehicles perhaps parked. And that would be the same fire issue that you're talking about, right?
Yes, with fire codes and some other things.
So if you can't even get in and out, then how would a fire truck get to that property? Any other comments, Tom?
Just, Bob, as you investigate best practices around the state and other ordinances around the state, other cities, I would also encourage you to check on the enforceability aspect of that particular ordinance. It may require a couple of phone calls with someone in that municipality, but to see, you know, how, let's just say, how enforceable are the provisions which they have in theirs so that we operate by a complaint basis. We know we don't have enough code compliance officers around, so let's check, check on the enforceability of whatever you come up with as far as best practice.
Absolutely. And enforceability is key. We also don't want to overreach either. You know, the government must make sure that people can do what they want, basically, along the line of impeding somebody else, obviously.
Well, it needs to be reasonable. It can't create undue burdens on individuals, which is a key issue.
So our topic today is parking in yards. Do we want to also, you want us also to take a look at the commercial vehicles portion as well?
I would say yes. It kept being, being brought up, but.
Okay.
All right. So would that, any other comments or direction before we take a break?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will take a break for 10 minutes. Oh, wait, once again, I messed up. Public comment, please.
I think the aesthetics of our city are definitely an issue. This issue you bring up about cars, and this happens to be particularly about cars because that's your addressing, on private property, I have some issues about because people, what people do on their private property with their personal things are somewhat limited in what y'all can address. My brother happens to be a car collector, and he has old cars on his place, and he does this all the time. And so he's always restoring and rebuilding and all this stuff, tries to do it nice and neat. There are people that do many things on their property that you may not see visually. You may not like them, but they do them. And they're not against the law. And it's not against the law for people to do this. And so I have questions about imposing your further regulations on people on their private property for your aesthetics, especially when you look around our city and look at our commercial facilities and our commercial buildings and all these things, which definitely need some aesthetic improvement and some code compliance relating to things with fire issues and such. And there are cars. And there are people in town, I know a particular lawyer that has boats piled all over his property that nobody seems concerned about. And I think it's rather trashy, but that's my opinion. So I have concerns about that. So when you're making ordinances relating to people's private property and the things they have on their property, because I may not like what you have, but, and the people next to me, and I live out in the middle of nowhere, but if the person in the ranch down the way decides to pull a, an RV up there in their property and do something with it, or in town, if you pull up after a week of vacation and you want to unload your RV and you want to park it in the street, why should anybody question that? And these are things I have concerns about when we're addressing these particular things because there are many other issues of people doing things. And again, it's on their private property. So I have a question on that.
Well, I think what we're trying to.
Before you go making more ordinances that most people don't even understand because they're so colluded and don't even have a clue, there's an ordinance that you want to try to tell them how to park on their private property. So.
I think what we're trying to do today is open up the conversation for all of the complaints that we get from phone calls and emails and don't have the answer for it. So we're trying to clarify.
I appreciate that.
The mud in the middle for ourselves, but as well for our citizens, because it is.
Because it's not only aesthetics, it becomes some fire issue and things like that. And like I say, you look at our commercial facilities in areas like Stadium Park Plaza and areas like that where we have garbage, what I would consider very un aesthetically piled up, but also a fire issue that need to be looked at. So maybe it's an overall aesthetic and cleanliness aspect that we need to look at, not just cars and people's private property and what they do on that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do want to mention that. It really truly is not just about aesthetics. It also goes to value of property as well. So whenever you have a trashed-out property next to yours and you maintain yours, the value of your property could be affected as well. So, okay. Just wanted to stress that. Thank you.
Are we ready? Oh, no. Evelyn, come on up.
I just want to touch base on what she said just a little bit because.
And you're Evelyn Smith again.
Did I have to say that again? I'm sorry. Evelyn Smith, that's M D five. That not only do we have clutter with the cars and so forth, but on people's property, and I think she mentioned that, and some of it looks like a fire hazard. So I didn't know if anything was being done about that or if there was a code violation with people with just unnecessarily junk in their yards. And like you said, it does affect the property next door, the value of the property next door also. So is that included in?
Yes, ma'am.
What you guys are already talking about as far as junk cars and so forth, that is included and looked at?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody ready for a break?
We are.
Okay, we'll take a break. 7:00 AM, and we will reconvene and continue on with our regular agenda items today. We are ready to open discussion on Item D, discussion and review of Chapter 1, Article 1.09, Division 3, Uniform Tax Abatement Policy of the Code of Ordinances. And Michael Dane, you are on for this conversation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Dane, interim Economic Development Director today. Here to talk about the current, well, tax abatement policy in general. What brought us here today? We had a tax abatement policy for years. It expired. And we renewed, under the old terms, that policy. We're excited to get.
When did it expire?
Pardon me?
When did it, the old policy expire and the new one pass? I don't remember it.
I think it expired a couple of years ago.
About 2018, I believe.
2018. And we had a project come forward that was interested in that possibility, and so we reintroduced and council passed the tax abatement policy with the terms largely as they were in the previous policy. And as soon as we were done, we had another prospect come forward that was non-conforming, in other words, not eligible under the terms of the ordinance that we recently passed. I think that's important for a couple, well, for one main reason. Regardless of what these rules are, staff and council and the Coast of DC Board have a very pro-development attitude, and we're trying not to say no for any reason. We're trying to develop solutions. So whether we amend our current policy or not, if we have conforming or non-conforming, eligible or non-eligible projects, we will be talking to you about your preference for that.
So why even have a plan?
Well, so that we can...
I mean, if it's that big and that broad and we're going to do whatever, come forward no matter what it is, should there even be a policy, or should all projects be brought forth for discussion?
That, that's a great, great question, Mayor. Under the current policy, they have to be brought forward anyway. We have not, you have not delegated to staff any autonomy with regard to approval of tax abatements. They all have to come to you. By approving a set of terms, we broadcast to prospects what we are ready to entertain. And, but the reality is, we try to go that, that extra mile, and if a prospect has a valid project, we'll talk to you about it. And so one of the answers to that question is trying to write that policy as broadly as possible to allow council to retain that discretion. Council will retain that discretion, at least the authority, moving forward, but the discretion about what council's values are for what type of projects would receive, how strong an abatement, will change as we move forward. You know, we're struggling, we've had this conversation last budget cycle. The impact of state statute on our ability to generate property tax revenue, generate and collect property tax revenue, is evolving. And as we, as an organization, learn to deal with, adapt to those situations, our values for granting tax abatements may evolve also. So the key is for council to retain the authority and the discretion, and if there are certain areas you certainly don't want to consider tax abatements, we should write those out.
What would be the recommendation if there were some that you, that would be written out and not at all eligible? Are there those things? Do you have, are we prepared to discuss those things that currently are in the policy that says if you ask for this, the answer's no, but you can appeal it? But what are they?
We don't have anything that we've thought of that we would say no to. It's very much a values-oriented decision. What is our, what is the organization's priority at this time versus what sort of revenues would we be delaying? And so we don't have anybody that we would write out, which suggests a broader approach, again, a broader approach. A similar answer to the previous question you asked, a broader approach allows the discretion to reside with council and gives more opportunity for projects to be eligible in a shorter timeframe. You know, if we write, if we don't do anything, and we've got a project which is a priority for council, we'll bring it back and we'll amend the ordinance to conform to what council's desire is. And so that'll take more time, but the broad approach, broad eligibility, is consistent with a philosophy that started 10 or more years ago, move, try to move at the speed of business. And so I know that from the Coast of DC perspective, they try to move things along quickly. I know council, from a Coast of DC perspective, would also try to move quickly, and, you know, if we had a project today that was, well, we do have a project today that doesn't, isn't eligible, but if council wants it to be approved, we'll, we'll line those ducks up so we can knock those down one at a time and make that happen. If we have to amend the ordinance, it'll take more time. But if it's currently eligible, we'll just jump through the, the process to create the zone, authorize the project, execute the contracts.
But what you just said is you could amend the ordinance and vote yes at any point in time, is that correct, Teresa? Or do you have, would you explain that?
Well, the reason that we need the ordinance is because the statute requires you to adopt guidelines before we enter tax abatement agreements. So we need some guidelines to start as a starting point. And again, as Mike said, that is just council approval. So if a project came forward that doesn't meet those guidelines and you're still interested in doing it, we would bring those guidelines back to you for amendment, and then you can amend them. That way, it's a fair playing field for everybody, and everybody goes into the game understanding what the rules are. But it is a requirement to have guidelines that are adopted.
Okay.
I think the important part of that is that we don't see that as the end of the conversation. If something doesn't comply, if council says we're open to consideration, then that's not the end of the conversation. We, we want to try to make that option available through a budget amendment process, or, I'm sorry, ordinance amendment process. So, all that to say, we don't have to have a hard decision today. I think what we're looking for is some broad guidance on, on what to bring back to you, and, and we'll go from there.
Well, I think the, before we can do that, we have to understand what it says no to. Yes, Larry?
Same thing I was thinking. Can we have an example of what would fit into this gray area where we need to seriously take a look at it?
That's a great question. What we have, the slides we've prepared show what we would say yes to. I'm not, I'm...
We're not interested in the yes, we're interested in the no's.
That's a great point.
Yeah, the possible no's, because that's really what you're asking. I mean, I think that's what you're asking, is we obviously say yes to the things on the screen in front of us.
Right.
But what's left behind?
Bob, do you have any idea for a succinct way to get to that? Or will we need to work that up separately?
When I read through all of those things on this slide, and I'm doing it somewhat fast, I'm not sure what, what the no is.
Well, for example, we have a, an application right now for a utility-related company. It's, NEX code is under, falls under utilities. That does not qualify under our current ordinance as it's written. So the idea was to, first of all, try to align our requirements more closely with what the state allows under the Economic Development Act, but then also to give council as much latitude as possible. The reason we need this to begin with is the state says in order to have a tax abatement policy, you have to have certain guidelines. So, so we do have to have the guidelines. We can't just say, well, we'll do this, any, you know, anything council says. But what we, we can do is have guidelines as broad as possible, and then allow council still an option to look at each one on an individual basis. And you will still have to look at each project on an individual basis regardless whether it fits the list or not. You're going to have individual approval on each one. And that will include not only the eligibility of the company, but also the amount of abatement. The only restriction there is if you, if you create a zone that encompasses a number of properties, each property has to be given the same consideration. Now, the way to sort of work around that, if you will, is when you create a zone, you create a zone for a single property. That way, even if they're next door to each other, they're two different zones, they can have two different sets of guidelines.
Very property-specific.
Correct. That helped.
Daniel, you want to comment on tax abatement and economic impacts, or...
Again, on our end, and again, the authority is given to city council, but really in order for us to consider a project, and I'm preaching to the choir, I know you guys understand this, we have to have the opportunity to look at the industry specific. It doesn't mean that you say yes to every one of the ones that ask for a, an abatement, but you actually can at least consider that, that opportunity for that industry that's already listed on there. As far as the economic development and looking at this, what the state is looking at, the state does allow for certain industry, and that's basically what we're looking at right now today, is the recommendation to go with this, this industry, to include it in the amendment. It is statute recommendation that we move forward with that. But again, including it in the amendment doesn't mean that in the future you have to approve a certain spec, project just because it falls in, within that industry.
That's, that's absolutely correct. Council retains full discretion, and that's the key. With a broad-based authorization you grant yourself, then you retain the discretion to say, we just don't see the value in that, at that level, and you can trim a project back. One of the, one of the difficulties is in this table, certain number of jobs, certain capital investment, there's, there's less flexibility here than, than could be if we eliminated this, you would have greater flexibility. If you had a very capital-intensive project but didn't create a lot of jobs, you, you would retain the discretion for what you thought the value was there. On the other hand, if we were going through a time or in a location where the jobs were the priority, not necessarily a capital investment, it would allow you to agree to craft a solution and agree to that contract for that solution without the constraints of the current policy. And so our recommendation is to align with the, what the state, what the act allows, use language such as "up to." So we set those outer limits, but we don't necessarily conform, require that a project conform to a table.
But we have a table.
Yes, and, and I think we would propose to get rid of that. So that if you had, again, a project that was capital-intensive but didn't create a lot of jobs, you would have a little more discretion about how you would grant that, that abatement. But not be required, no requirement. Still, still, it's got to be a priority for council. And that's, of course, the item number three is that there's no autonomy created in this ordinance that every abatement has to come to council. And so if I were to characterize what direction we might ask for, you might say, leave it as is and bring back the non-conforming ones. We won't, we'll just, we'll just talk about them. If they, if they're not eligible, we'll talk about it. The county has a, a policy which is a little broader than ours. We could try to align with the county so that there was consistency. So when our economic developers were talking to prospects, we could have roughly or exactly the same kinds of opportunities that they provided the county.
But we would need to see those before we would agree to that.
Exactly. No direction, it's just direction today, no specific policy today. And then the third option would be generally as broad as the state would allow, to allow you to do what you felt was in the city's best interest when the prospect came forward.
All right, so the next code, the state allows for utility, but the city does not.
Yes, ma'am, that's absolutely correct.
And why would that, the decision to exclude utilities in our city was because...
That conversation occurred years ago and likely in an executive session, and so I don't have a good answer for you on that, and...
But the state allows utility...
Yes, ma'am.
Companies, corporations to apply for tax abatement.
There are things we have not allowed that the state does allow. And right now, I guess where Bob and Nora and I are is we're questioning why we would unnecessarily restrict council's authority. And, and, and so we wanted to get that out in the open and get your sense for what your response to that was. Why would we unnecessarily restrict?
Well, I think it's appropriate since the council is obligated to put together a budget using all resources available, which are primarily property tax dollars and sales tax dollars. So we know our economy is based off of continually developing new businesses, which include developing product, but also, or property, but also creating jobs. Which is more important? I don't know. I'm not sure which one, depending on the company, what that means, and particularly as it looks at long-term number of people. I mean, we have some highly intense developments, if you will, like a solar farm, which really impacts the county, does not impact the city in the traditional sense of property tax dollars being created. And on a very short term, there's probably an impact on our economy because of the number of people they employ, but that's a short period of time. At the end of the day, once the solar farm is built, they leave town and maybe keep one to two people employed. So I understand some of that utility issue in conversation, so I think it has to be, in my opinion, brought forward because we have to approve a budget. And the only way you approve a budget is to find out how much revenue we have to pay for all the things that we have to pay for and are important to the citizens. So I think it's appropriate that we leave it, that they must come before council for final approval. I don't know why we would have NEX codes more limiting than the state. If the state allows it, I'm not sure why we wouldn't. But again, I still think it's appropriate that would come back to council for final approval because of the impact on budgets. And Harry?
Well, I'm probably going to piggyback off of what you just said, but I like to make it broad enough to align with what the state allows, but bring it back to the council for every one of these things. And so you use the word "up to" a maximum, and I think that allows the council to make those decisions either based on the economic impact of a monetary investment, or number of people, or a combination of both. So bring it back to the council, but let's open it up and align it with the state.
You know, the latest statistics that have come out reflect that unemployment is increasing again. So whether it's the state or the county or the city right now, unemployment claims have gone up, which means that in our economy, job creation is hugely important. We need jobs for our citizens, and we need affordable wages, not minimum wage, but living wage employment. And I would assume that with a utility company, we're talking about wages that are above minimum wage. I don't know that, but I'm assuming. So it has multiple issues attached to it. I think coming back to council is the correct thing to do. I think expanding the tax code, the NEX codes to be equal to the state, maybe, I don't know, because I don't know what they are, and I don't know what the counties are, so I can't answer state or county. I think we should look at those things and understand why they're allowed in the county but not in the city, why it's allowed in the state but not in the city. I mean, you've got three entities that don't all align, and that's odd in itself.
We're with you.
Okay. Good. All right, so that's the discussion.
All right, then we will bring back an ordinance proposal consistent with a broad, broad approach where council retains the discretion to execute or not execute contracts for, for tax abatements.
Yes, and I think to keep in mind, because as I just said before, the county benefits aggressively by wind and solar farms. The city does during the time of building, but we don't. So what they might allow because of a huge bump in their property tax might not work well for the city. So we need to be cautious as we have these conversations or you develop a policy to understand the impact in county is not the same as it is in the city, or the city's same in the county and the state, because the state wins no matter what. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will move into item E, which is discussion and review on animal services and challenges faced by San Angelo and other cities throughout the state and the country. And today we have Morgan Chagwooden here to make a presentation to us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some items for you today to just touch base on what we're seeing on the national landscape and how that's really filtering down to the local level. Of course, there's been some media lately that's reporting some animal services challenges, some crises that we're facing, and it's largely centered around dogs. So, if you'll forgive the conversation, we serve a lot more than that, but today we'll be largely dog-focused. I do think that that's the majority of what y'all are seeing and hearing about, and so that's what today's presentation will largely revolve around. There's been some national reporting around puppies and purebreds, and I'll talk more about locally what we're seeing, but that's, I think, unique at the national level about purebreds. And there is data reporting over almost a quarter of a million more dogs sheltered in 2023 than in prior years. And so, some of that is, that intake is up. They're reporting nationally that intake is up about 5%, which of course is, you know, thousands more animals, and that adoptions are down nominally, down about 1%, but at this scale, that does add up. And that there are groups that have sought lifesaving measures and been, you know, even private shelters that have been at some, you know, metric, a really high live release rate organization, that are now today in late 2023 and going into 2024, making space-based euthanasia decisions for the first time in years, meanings that they are euthanizing entirely because they're full, not because of medical, not because of temperament or behavior, simply because they're full. So locally, a lot of what we're seeing is pressures on owners, that, you know, the inflation that we're all experiencing is impacting San Angelo families. Dog food costs is one section of the economy. Dog food cost is up 16% compared to the prior year. We also, of course, see a lot of restrictive housing, where people are reaching out to us, needing assistance because they're moving, they have personal issues that they've got to move, and their new place does not allow pets or does not allow dogs of a certain size or breed. We also know that our managed owner surrender policy has some impact on it. We want citizens to be able to call, come by, and get matched with resources immediately. For someone wishing to owner surrender their pet, we're going to refer them to a few steps. You know, we are at capacity, which is another policy recently adopted that definitely impacted, you know, what we're seeing in the community right now, and we just, we have limited resources. We have limited safety nets we're able to refer people to. So, owners are potentially leaving their dogs behind when they move out. They're potentially letting their dogs loose when they move out. They're potentially dumping them at my shelter. For the last quarter in 2023, we had 34 dogs dumped at the shelter. That we just came to work in the morning, and there's a litter of 11 puppies, or there's two dogs tethered to the front pole. And so, those are presumably people who reached out for resources, and what we could offer did not satisfy their emergency need, and that was what they chose to do.
Do we have security cameras around the animal shelter?
We do, and it is insufficient for law enforcement purposes as far as trespassing or criminal abandonment. I certainly can't tell, I can say, tell probably a make and model of a vehicle, but not a license plate. Even if I could, are they, is it really abandonment when they have the presumption that the animal will get care? So, it's something we refer to law enforcement, but has, is pretty ineffective as far as The, so, to address those parts of it, we think that San Angelo needs pet-friendly housing. There was Texas state legislation passed around this this year, but pretty broad. We would just ask for those that can lift the restriction on breed and size to please join this movement about increasing and improving animal care in our community. We also want to offer-
Say that again, because I'm not sure I understand that statement.
Landlords and rental companies restricting what size and breed of pet you can keep with your family.
So, there's legislation out there that's been passed?
That it doesn't address that part of it. It does address something about pet-friendly housing, but it was not enough to help San Angeloans.
Because?
Because it doesn't remove the restrictions or ask to remove the restrictions around breed and size.
So, the state passed legislation that we can't follow or implement because our local policy says it doesn't matter what size or breed you have, you're allowed to have that in your house or your apartment or your home?
It was a pretty broad support of pet-friendly housing. There wasn't much teeth in it, for lack of a better term.
And so, who passed this?
I'm sorry?
Who passed this? The state itself?
At the state level, yes.
Legislators passed this, this most current legislative session?
Correct, in 2023.
Have we read that language, Theresa?
Probably at some point I have, but I don't recollect it right now. I'm looking for it, though.
Because I think that's odd in itself, but-
We need more. San Angelo needs more than what the state would adopt statewide.
But are we allowed to adopt something strict, more strict than what the state allows? So, we can create our own ordinance within the city of San Angelo that is more strict than what that state legislation that was passed says?
Yes, we can.
The next item that we're recommending that we believe San Angeloans need is a home-to-home owner surrender network. And we've been slow to implement that because of the oversight and that we want it to be done responsibly, but essentially, we would host a portal, a platform, where people wanting to surrender their pets can match with people who want pets, and we want-
That a little, I mean, I know we always have an issue with numbers of people available to do things, but I don't know how we would have enough time in our schedules to, I mean, we, you know, we try to get animals adopted, so that's time-consuming, but trying to have an event where me and Lucy sit down together and discuss the pet that she doesn't want that I might want in front of you all, and you decide whether that works or not is a little heavy-handed, I think.
Sure, but in an emergency crisis, we can adopt something that is very little staff oversight, and so it's simply the platform, owners and potential owners meet, connect virtually, then connect in person, and the city's-
Don't they do that anyway? I mean, I would think that they would do that anyway. If I have a pet, and I know you, and you think you want my pet, I would assume the two of us have been able to work that out between the two of us without any oversight.
And we do refer people to Facebook groups, social media. This would just be another resource and a platform where you know that's what you're going for, right? That social media gets so bogged down with, you know, homebreeder selling puppies against city ordinance, certainly marketing my pets for adoption, and so just to know that if you're, that this is the specific avenue for this specific need.
Wow.
So, to do it right, we would like the staff oversight and ensuring those pets are going to a good home and ensuring those pets are current on city ordinance, but in a crisis and an emergency, we could adopt something that is simply the city hosting that portal where it's free for folks to use and as they see fit.
Yes, Tom.
So, Morgan, so if I'm reading that right.
Brian may not want me to talk. This would be something to where you can put up and say, I'm new to town, I've just discovered my apartment or my house is not going to let me have a pet that's over 40 pounds or blah, blah, blah. They could actually Google and go to a platform we've created, so here's a place you could go and research, and here's a listing of people that might be interested in adopting a pet. Would that be similar to how that portal would work?
Correct, rehoming your pet.
But don't we have, I might be crazy, but don't we already have posted animals for adoption?
Sure, so these would be pets that are not sheltered. They're not at the city's municipal shelter. This is home-to-home owner surrender. So, the pet is in my home, and you want it, and we meet, and you get it.
Yep.
So, basically, that's right. Morgan, so I'm assuming that, of course, you have a pet and you love your pet, but you're just, you're in a situation where you can't keep it in the apartment, and they're not allowing you to do that. So, you want to make sure this, your pet goes to a good home. So, is that part of the process, is to have that ability to know who's going to be, who's going to be adopting the pet?
Sure, yes.
And also, I think that kind of eases that individual releasing or letting that pet go at that point.
Yes, and of course, for our specific portal, we'll adopt what we set the standards to be, and then owners and potential owners can dialogue of what they're comfortable with. So, we would say, the pet must be spay neutered, must be microchipped, must be rabies vaccinated, must be going to a home with these things, or what, must have landlord permission, must have all adult in the home position, permission. We'll set forth those parameters, and we'll also set forth parameters for potential owners, you know, make sure you're not getting scammed, never should someone ask for this information, ask to see these things about the pet. And, but then, the city would be largely hands-off at that point. I work closely with a group out of New Jersey who has a similar, uses one of the portals that I'm familiar with, and they're very hands-on, and so they handle it almost like an adoption. So, they approve what pets are coming onto the portal, know this pet has a bite history, we do not, we recommend that this not be rehomed. Or, this potential owner has some history that we would not recommend it get this pet. And so, that group out of New Jersey is handling it almost like an adoption, and they're vetting each of those pets coming in. They're still not onsite at the shelter. They're going directly from their previous home to their new home, and that would be my preference of how to launch it, because we want to ensure that these animals are well-cared-for and people are responsible, which is why I haven't proposed it before. But in the event of, you know, we've got to do something that is an option to consider.
Excuse me, ma'am. Just to speak in support of Morgan's idea, which I think is really interesting, what she's describing goes on all the time in the community undertaken by private individuals or other rescues, but the missing pieces that her suggestion might cover, which is a good thing for us to consider, are things like, somebody posts on Facebook that they can't keep their dog, and somebody else says, that's a cute dog and I'd like to have your dog. And it could be that the original owner was a very responsible person, got their dog microchipped, fully vetted, vaccinated, et cetera, but when the dog is handed to the new owners, no transfer of the microchip is done. The first owner moves abroad, who knows what. The initiator of the microchip is the person that has to initiate the transfer. So, Morgan finds the dog on the street, and it's linked to the original owner and cannot be tracked. And so, what she's proposing could help overcome some of these very practical problems that they encounter daily, and hopefully encourage or discourage repeat offenders in that arena and also the spay and neuter issues, because we know that they are released onto the streets. It's not a judgment against Morgan and her staff, but enforcement is hard, so they may be cited, but it may never make it all the way through the system. So, I think this is an interesting idea, and it gives Morgan and her staff the opportunity to be more involved in the community in a positive way and to appear more approachable instead of like adversaries, and the complaints that we hear may be mediated by something like that. I'm interested, I think it's a neat idea, I'd like to learn more.
Good. And that could be one of the terms of the agreement of the portal, is if your pet is already microchipped, we'll work with you to get that conveyed to the new owner. If your pet is not yet microchipped, the new owner needs to come in and participate in our microchipping to get that registered, that one of many things we would ask them to complete as part of that transaction.
Yes, Larry, sorry.
Aren't there aspects of this kind of network in existence already in the state? For example, we contacted some people on the internet that were fostering a dog over by Dallas, and they vetted us, and we went through this process. So, I think there are aspects of this in existence that we could tie into, do that, whether it's moving a dog to another location in another state, or, you know, somewhere outside of San Angelo.
Yes, and this is a nationwide portal, so it may not be San Angeloan, San Angeloan. If you've got a particularly desirable pet that you're trying to rehome, you may be coming from Colorado to get that pet because you saw it on this portal. It's not simply searching by zip code or by your current location, it's searching by, well, I'm looking for this breed, or I'm looking for this type of pet. So, it does have potential to be wider.
This works. I've personally seen it in action.
And we have the staff to manage this?
It would be us setting it up and walking away is what would be on the table today. Again, we would like to have more oversight of it because we want that compliance and that responsibility, but current staffing can accommodate setting it up, walking away, doing a bit of marketing regularly, making sure it's on the website and easily accessible to folks.
Okay.
Could it be a potential opportunity for approved volunteers?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Good conversation, keep going.
The, one other item I'd like to recommend to support owners is, and to really speak to the pressures on our system, is to offer free microchips if you reside in a target neighborhood. That the target neighborhoods, as defined by HUD, that the rest of our department supports in neighborhood and family services are also the areas where we see the most calls for service, the highest intake, the fewer owner redemptions. I mean, if you lose a really desirable pet, I have a very cute little purebred dog come in, but you live in a target neighborhood, the likely of you coming to the shelter for your pet is very low. So, we want to paper our target neighborhoods with microchips. We want large-scale microchips offered in our target neighborhoods. One, so we can get those pets back quickly, potentially even without a shelter intake. We impound it onto the ASO truck, deliver it to your home, you get your, you know, tickets to municipal court, and, but that pet is back home with you, and it's more affordable than the daily cost of care at the shelter. But also, to track down, you know, we suspect, but can't confirm by data, that when someone calls me and says, I'm moving, I can't have my dog anymore, and we say, we ask you to go through this process, and they say, I can't do any of that, I'm just going to move out and leave my pet behind, or I'm going to turn her loose. Then she has a litter, then it's a bigger problem. Then we're responding a lot, and it's a large number of dogs at that point loose in the neighborhood. Well, at that point, that female was microchipped to you, and I can make contact with you, continue enforcement, continue follow-up, which is, I think, is something that we're all hungry for, to make those that are causing the problem be responsible for answering to the problem. And so, free microchips to target neighborhoods is something that can be launched at any scale. We get our microchips at a cost of $7, so even $2,000 could fund 300 microchips. But at a larger scale, if we were able to fund multiple iterations of that, and just know that if you live in a target neighborhood, if your address shows that, we'll offer you free microchips while supplies last, or for the month of May, or whatever it is. I think that that is a big answer to one of the pressures on the system.
And those funds are where? Do you have that in the budget?
Undetermined. I do not have that in the budget. And, you know, we work with other organizations, other government shelters, we ask, you know, what are you doing that's working well? What experience do you have with this issue that we're seeing in San Angelo? And we come back again and again to the data tells the story. And I think that the media that was shared recently relied on a lot of data, so I thought it was important to report back to you on the data here locally, that in fiscal year '22, our intake, nationally, they're reporting intake up about 5%. We're not seeing that locally. That in fiscal year '22, our intake was about 4,000 animals, 2,200 were dogs. So, dog intake was down about 38%. For fiscal year '23, when we took in 2,900 total animals, almost 1,500 were dogs. And that is a couple of things. One, it's our managed owner surrender process, that lots and lots of folks are needing to rehome their pets, and the process I had didn't serve them well, so I didn't get those pets. And two-
So, progress has been made in terms of, I mean, to have a reduction from 4,000 to 2,900 intake in animals is a significant improvement.
It is. It's a, it was an important thing to accomplish, you know, nationwide, those rural shelters, which, although we're a booming bustling economy of 100,000 people, we do serve largely a rural population, a rural mentality. And so, for those shelters that are more rural, your metric is generally 25 animals per thousand residents. Well, we were so high above that at 4,000 for several years in a row, so it was important- was important for us to get that number down to an achievable, um, number. But we do think that that led to more dogs at large. And now we're in that balancing act of, um, we swung so heavily from 4,000 animals taken into 2,900. Did that create more animals in the community? Let's go address that next thing now.
And did it? Yes. One, one second, Harry. And so did it? Were there more animals at large reported?
I'll get to animal services officers' caseworked in a moment. I do think it's important to note, and I hope this answers your question, that although intake was down and the number of pets sheltered was down, our workload was not down, our calls for service were not down, our walk-in traffic, all of that maintained, uh, year over year.
That's hard to swallow that it was more work, but thousand less animals. But, Harry?
I just hope those thousand aren't the ones I see running on the streets.
Exactly.
I, I mean, because there are more, more dogs today on the streets than there's ever been. And I don't know whether people are just not responsible or whether they're turning them loose or whatever the case may be. But, uh, I mean, the opportunities for animal control officers are greater today than they've been at least in the last 40 years since I've lived in this one particular house.
Well, nationwide, that is true as well. So when the nation is that way, the state's that way, the city's that way. So there's been a big animal intake, uh, animal situation in, I think, every city. I don't know of any city who's conquered the, the problem. Continue.
So one other metric we always look at is, um, the number of pets, um, released alive. The biggest component of that is those that are adopted and rescue transferred. So for fiscal year 22, our rescue partner, Contra Valley Paws moved 2,200 animals or about 53% of our, um, total outcomes. Last year, they moved 1,500 animals, about 50% of local outcome. So, or, or total outcomes. So we are looking for more community support around adoptions. Um, I think it is important to note for fiscal year 23, um, our euthanasia decreased to just 9% of our, um, total outcomes.
What was euthanasia before?
Down from 641 animals died or euthanized in fiscal year 22 to 275. So a massive decrease in the number of pets euthanized. And that's largely to speak to our, our intake being down and, and other resources we deployed. But, um, it, you know, the, the mood wasn't celebratory that we achieved 90% in fiscal year 23. We knew that there was a big demand on animal services, field operations that was not being addressed. And so, um, it, it's hard to be, I, I want to be proud of our, our team and what they did, um, but we also know that that's part of the story. It's one step towards addressing what's going on with field services. So I mentioned that our workload, our calls for service, our traffic, um, was not down. So we worked over 6,100 cases, um, in fiscal year 23. So that is any response from an animal services officer, whether that's to check conditions for a pet out in this weather with no shelter, whether that's, um, you know, a, a, um, uh, a call for dog at large, a call for a cat in a trap, a call for possums, raccoons in a trap. It's just any-
About skunks.
Yes, all, all of that. Um, so-
That's the one I hear about all the time, the skunks.
Although our intake was down, our cases were not down, uh, largely, largely unchanged from the prior year. Now, one item that's really concerning to me and what we look at is our animal to person bites. We're at 56% from about 150 to 264 such cases last year. And so that's something we've got to get on top of and have got to tackle that, um, we've mentioned, uh, in the past that we need two additional animal services officers. I do not think in fiscal year 24, my team can work much more than 6,000 cases simply because of the number of, uh, staff that we have. We have four animal services officers. And so to address, uh, more enforcement, preventing, uh, and, and this could be dogs at large, this could be your own pet in the home, um, this could be cats. So just any animal to person bite. Uh, but still, that metric being at 56% is something that's quite concerning to me from the, um, public health and public safety, um, viewpoint that has, has got to get some attention to prevent that from going up and get it back down to a, I don't know if any animal to person bites is manageable, but definitely, uh, decreasing that as much as possible.
Is that entire, would those animal, those animal to person bites be in certain targeted areas that, that could be focused on? Or is there something that is all over the city? Or is there something where we see the repeat offenders having animals that are aggressive? And it's more of a person, persons or areas, neighborhoods? Is it something we're seeing all over the city? It's, give us a little more detail on that because that really is an issue.
That is an excellent question and I don't have that data with me. Um, I can certainly get it to y'all in a, in a follow-up of where, you know, mapping it out geographically, where is that happening? Um, as far as our repeat, um, customers, we often see, uh, pets, the pets that we see more frequently for bite events are largely animal to animal, meaning, um, my dog gets out and bites your cat, then it's not uncommon that that happens again because I still have a fence issue or I still have a whatever issue. Um, and so certainly we equip, um, the owners of those victim animals to, you know, pursue additional, um, um, channels through municipal court. Um, but those that are animal to person bites, um, citizens generally take that more seriously. And so when we're having a frank conversation with someone saying, look, your pet bit your mother-in-law or your pet bit your neighbor, you, you can't have a pet that bites people. So either spend this time while the pet's in quarantine, absolutely reinforcing your fencing, doing all the things necessary to prevent a bite from happening again, or consider humane euthanasia at, at your vet for that pet. If you can't control this pet biting somebody, then some, something's got to happen. And so that's not an uncommon occurrence where-
Did that happen this past year? Did we have cases of that?
Absolutely. And we had a case of that this morning where an animal bit a person over the weekend. We went ahead and impounded the animal and now we're meeting the owner at the veterinarian today to euthanize it, um, because they, they understand that this, this cannot continue. So I will get you more data on that, uh, but just, um, what we are seeing as far as repeat offenders is more on the animal to animal side. The animal to person side is, is the big metric that, um-
But unfortunately, you have one animal attack, one child and, you know, that's like, it's, to think about a child being attacked by, um, or an elderly person or a handicapped person being bit by an animal is just something we can't afford.
For sure. And those are the ones often escalating to my level where I'm having a frank conversation with the pet owner saying, you know, you can't have this pet in your home any longer. Um, so we would, you are at the end of the line. We do recommend humane euthanasia. We don't recommend you go to like the home-to-home surrendering platform that we'll be hosting soon. We don't recommend you go through like an owner surrender process, just disclosing that bite and the adoptability of that pet, um, that this is, this is where you are, is considering euthanasia at this time.
Yes, Karen. She gives me that look. Yeah, she's ready.
Um, a, a couple of questions and I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Thomas's comment about the roaming animals as, as part of my question. I don't think any of us are in favor of that going forward and would like to see that remedied. And then I would also like to say that Councilwoman Miller and I are curious to know, uh, and it may be difficult to quantify, but over time, it seems like free microchipping of animals would help resolve a lot of the issues that you were bringing up. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And that in turn would save money for the animal shelter. So, uh, for example, we were speaking about microchips earlier. You offer a free microchip, it's registered to Lucy because it's her dog. The second number on that list is the animal shelter now. So the, the mystery of who owns the dog is forever resolved. If they can't find Lucy, they can find you and go forward from there. So theoretically, um, you've, you've solved a couple of problems. You've got a complaint about a loose animal that seems aggressive. You can find out who it belongs and who's accountable. It, it seems like the ripple effect is potentially there for a lot of good things to happen. Is that logical?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. The, um, you know, any microchip we implant, we're already attached to. And so we encourage folks to list as many, you know, list, list yourself, list your boyfriend, list your mom, list as many emergency contacts and we manage that data and have it available. Um, it is, it is, so we, we love our microchip for that reason, um, that, that, you know, if you forget to pay an annual fee, some microchips won't release the owner information. Well, the city's microchip is, is free for the life of the pet, free to update any information, whether you contact the microchip company directly or animal services, um, to update that for you. And will, all of that data is there and available and a really good resource, you know, if that pet's ever encountered again.
Microchipping is not voluntary, is it?
Microchip is required by city ordinance for all pets over four months of age.
So if they have to do this and at seven bucks a pop, this is a great deal for us because we don't have that animal in the shelter for two weeks trying to figure out who it belongs to.
Right. That the average cost of care is 35 to $45 a day for every, um, pet that's in my care. Puppies are more expensive. Um, repeat visitors are less expensive. That first day's more expensive. But on average, it could be, you know, 40 to $50 a day, uh, for me to care for that pet. But if it's microchipped, um, some good Samaritans say, I'll call the owner right now. It looks like he lives two doors down from me. Or the animal services officer says, if I'm around the corner, I'm going to go knock on the door. So, um, we do charge $13 for a microchip right now, which is still a bargain. Um, but, um, reach, reaching those, um, most at, in need where perhaps you have three pets and $13 apiece is, is prohibitive to your budget. Then sure, let's, let's match with the target neighborhoods and, and paper those folks first with, with free microchips is, is my recommendation.
But if you can't afford, you know, you, and by city ordinance, you're required to be microchipped. If you can't afford a microchip, how do you afford a pet?
Thank you. So the, um, that is a previous school of thought that we, we observed multiple times. It, it is something that we pivoted from early on where, well, if your pet wound up in the shelter, you don't deserve to have it back. You clearly don't deserve to have this pet. And we did a large pivot, um, largely that i- if, if your pet winds up at my facility and you don't come for it and you live in a target neighborhood, you're going to have a new pet in two months. But I'm committed to life savings, so I'm holding on to your pet. So can I just do some case management, keep that, get that pet with you, do some referral to some low-cost services, that there are people, um, who are experiencing homelessness that provide adequate care for their pet. Their pets have a current rabies vaccine, have been spay neutered in their prior history, um, they have access to, to pet food. Um, even our, our most indigenous, indigenous, I'm sorry, indigent San Angeloans have access to care and meet standards of care for their pets. So, uh-
That's mind-boggling.
I'm sorry.
That's kind of mind-boggling.
It, it's a, it's a big shift into school of thought, for sure. But we've seen it again and again. Happy, healthy pets.
Appreciate the information because you're providing, uh, information I think most of us are not totally aware of statistically for sure. We, anyway, continue.
So just to wrap up, um, all of the staff recommendations, one, anything around pet-friendly housing, whatever we can do on that. Um, two, increasing adoptions, uh, local adoptions, out-of-a-town adoptions, whatever that hap- however that happens. Um, launching this home-to-home owner surrender platform, uh, where pets are not having a shelter intake but still have a resource to, uh, move their pet. Um, and then, uh, funding for field services, the two animal services officers, and then the outreach with microchips and target neighborhoods. Um, I also would recommend, um, we are running, we have, of course, our big facility improvement project going on. And we originally had a plan to break ground in November 2023. Uh, we had some complex engineering, um, issues and so we're working through that. Uh, we also are working on the make-ready of the temporary facility, uh, which is going to have some expense and, and then housing two facilities. When we first came to y'all for this project, we didn't know if we were completely moving out of our shelter. Um, but it is, it is going to be a situation where we're essentially running two facilities for that timeframe. So having some additional part-time, um, help at the second facility, um, having the make-ready for that facility to be able to serve our, our pets, um, and looking at breaking ground in May summer 2024 at this point, uh, for that project and completing in November of 2024.
One of the issues that I hear regularly is that we allow too many animals to, uh, be picked up that are not neutered or spayed. What's the ruling? What's the ordinance on that issue?
Well, there's a few things that govern the spay neuter requirement. That one, um, any adoption, so any pet leaving our facility via adoption, the, uh, new owner has to, um, have that pet spay neutered or sign an agreement that they're going to. And we of, of course do that. Our, um, our rescue partner, Contra Valley Paws facilitates schedules and funds the spay neuter of all those adopted pets.
So they do that? You, you turn that over to Paws to manage and oversee?
Correct. State law says we have to do it. We assign Contra Valley Paws to do it and they do it. The, um, for owners, city ordinance states that the owners are responsible to spay neuter. So if my pet is, uh, for city residents, it's an occasional time that I do get a pet of somebody that doesn't reside here, in which case they have no requirement to spay neuter their pet.
So the state doesn't have legislation relative to that issue?
Not for owned pets, no. Um, only for adoptions. So, um, it is not the city's responsibility, nor do we have the resources to spay neuter owned pets. There are also exemptions to the spay neuter ordinance and we wouldn't know those, um, on intake of a pet. So, um, that is why the enforcement and citations issued to the owners is how we pursue that. I can't keep a pet from somebody if I have your pet and it's unaltered and you come in to redeem it. I can't hold that pet from you. I have no legal recourse to do so. Um-
Even though the city ordinance says it must be microchipped and it must be spayed and neutered?
And it leaves microchipped. Uh, we implant that microchip at the time of redemption. Um, so, and, but we can't administer the rabies vaccine and we can't administer the spay neuter. Those three things are required for any owned cat or dog.
So when they come to reclaim and the animal is not microchipped at that point in time, we microchip it and charge them for the cost of that microchip?
Correct. And-
Before we surrender, before we give it back to the owner?
Correct. And we cite them for failure to spay neuter that pet and give a deadline to get that spay neuter and rabies vaccine.
You know, when you were talking about certain targeted neighborhoods, in those targeted neighborhoods, is it more about people whose animals get out or is it neighborhoods that people have a tendency to surrender their animals in those neighborhoods? Because a surrendered animal running wild is different than if I own an animal and it's not microchipped in one of those targeted neighborhoods.
Right. If your pet gets out, we have our first interaction with you, we cite you for dog at large. The odds of it getting out a, a second time are low. The odds, odds of it getting out a third time are even lower. Um, so the repeat offenders or the chronic issues or the items that escalate to y'all as packs of dogs at large, we believe that to be an owner simply let their pet loose or abandoned it in insufficient, um, enclosure. We don't know that because the pets aren't microchipped. Um, so that is simply a hypothesis. I want to be transparent in that. But, um, you know, anecdotally, as we're having conversations with people, that is the flow, um, from first cry for help to ultimate enforcement and response, um, that we believe is happening.
The lady who came forward earlier today who talked about things that she thought would improve, one was the chain link fence to back up a fence so they couldn't crawl underneath it. Is that a policy that we, uh, suggest to people who have frequent pet, who have, might have a frequent pet that constantly digs out from underneath and runs wild?
Yeah, absolutely. And we, um, have recommended a-
Oh, sorry.
We've recommended a, a fencing program that would be largely funded with donated dollars but could continue, um, seamless of if donations are low, where animal services officers actually provide a fence inspection, um, have some fencing material to do like a patch job of, hey, you've got this one spot where your dogs are getting out all the time, or your dogs are climbers, your dogs are diggers, your dog, whatever the issue is of that dog getting loose, um, that we would equip some basic, uh, fencing material on the truck with the animal services officers, um, to be offered at that time. Um, certainly our officers are working a tremendous number of cases and are strapped for time. So that's one, um, item that's prevented launching that program, but also simply having, um, the supplies for that. Um, and I did connect with the lady, um, earlier as she, uh, was on her lunch hour and I said, you know, um, here's my contact info, let's talk more.
You spoke before, uh, about the difficulty today and that we used to have cities that needed pets and so we could transport pets to other cities or other states who were in need of adoptable animals. Talk about that in today's environment.
You know, early on, 2017- You know, early on, 2017, probably well through 2020, doing those large-scale transports were our bread and butter. They were the only thing saving us. We sent fully a thousand animals out of town every year on these rescue transfers. And Concha Valley Paws is excellent at that. These receiving agencies all have a different criteria of what they want to see. They want this additional vaccine, or they want videos of behavior and temperament, or they want this medical workup, or they want the pets spay neutered. And Concha Valley Paws jumps through whatever hoops to satisfy those to send pets out on that. So that infrastructure was built up. We knew early on, looking at our numbers, that that made us really vulnerable. That made us really vulnerable to if there was a natural disaster in America, then those folks were gonna get attention instead of little old San Angelo where a crisis is every day. We also knew that as those receiving agencies stayed full, because that national media coverage that I talked about earlier, even private shelters are staying full considering euthanasia, their length of stay is up. And so at this point, everybody's full. We, San Angelo was early at being really good at those large-scale transports, and now a lot of the rest of the state and south and at-risk animals have gotten good at it too, and we have filled up those receiving agencies. So that's not to say our rescue transfers and large-scale transport is zero. If there is a, there are outlets that we're still pursuing, but it's nowhere near at the level that we were seeing in prior years.
Karen, I know you've been intimately involved in the animal shelter services area. What other questions do you have or comments that have not been brought up today that we need to have a conversation on?
I, again, refer to Councilman Thomas's comment about the roaming animals. I think that while that might have been an interesting possibility, the notion of releasing animals to roam is not working for our community. And perhaps we need more education to understand how that came to pass and what we can do to turn it around. I also frequently get comments from other rescues or members of the public saying they want to help, they don't know how to help, they don't understand the process, and they're confused by the relationship between the city and Concha Valley Paws. So we need to be better educators so that that relationship is understood, who does what is more clearly understood. Occasionally, there will be comments about funding, who's funding this. A comment came in during our discussion about people who don't own pets, do they have to pay for this because they're citizens? And so you hear the broadway of questions and concerns. I think concerned members of the public, people that would be willing to volunteer, they're very interested in forming a relationship with Paws and with Morgan, but they're not sure how to do that. I don't know if there's an opportunity to improve our volunteer services, improve our access to volunteers.
Do we need to have a town hall meeting where we bring everybody together and see if that doesn't resolve some of that and open up the doors for communication?
Absolutely. And all credit to Morgan, I know that she has been considering that very thing on a repeating basis that would give public access to her to answer some of those questions. The first few meetings might be very painful, but I know that we'll support you should you decide to go forward with that. Once everybody's had a chance to air their agreements, hopefully we can go forward with some solutions.
Talk about Pets Alive, that organization. Just tell us what that is, because we hear that kind of conversation going on a lot.
American Pets Alive is a group that was founded, gosh, probably around 2010 in Austin. And they identified that after years of large-scale investment in free spay neuter, that that did not decrease the euthanasia at the government shelter there in Austin. And so they.
Would that be true to San Angelo as well?
I think that the spay neuter ordinance was adopted, and for years thereafter, our save rate was twenty percent, forty percent. So spay neuter alone did not facilitate large-scale life-saving in San Angelo. It's everything else we changed around community cats, disease prevention, large-scale rescue transfer, increased return to owner. Those components also had to happen. And so American Pets Alive works with at-risk shelters like San Angelo that are still euthanizing, you know, a good many of our pets, and offers resources. So they offer resources in a variety of ways, whether that's training, onsite visits here, training for government shelter staff to go to Austin, coordinating transport, taking high-risk medical. Early on, when Concha Valley Paws was in the early stages of standing up their infrastructure around parvo treatment, we were sending any puppies positive for parvo to Austin that they could take, and those were pets that would previously not have a live outcome. So they, their tagline is save more pets faster.
Do we need to have our communications department focus on more publicity as it relates to animal bites? Because I'm horrified at the numbers, and I'm horrified to think that any day we could have a child or somebody who can't protect themselves bit by an animal. I just wonder if we've done enough community broadcasting, marketing, if you will, about what happens if your animal bites a human being, what our policy states, what will happen to that pet, et cetera.
Yeah, we've built out a lot more resources on our website to spell out common items. We also have like an FAQ in need of review to publish, and we had planned to schedule a number of PSAs or quick videos of just our most frequent calls, what the owner of the pet that was bitten needs to know, what pets, pet owners need to know of the aggressor suspect animal on a variety of topics. And bites and calls for service would be, is one of them. It's just the staff time and resources to create that content.
I just, that bite thing is an issue. We need to deal with it. And I think if we need to change how we do it, how we communicate, whatever the issues are on bites, we need to aggressively go after that single issue. It's just too key.
And I think that is more enforcement, that we could create content, we could create more communications, we could do more on that side of it. But I still only have four animal services officers serving six thousand cases a year. How do we serve seven thousand cases a year? How do we do more proactive enforcement and less reactive enforcement? That that's simply more bodies, which is easy to say and tougher to fund, and I recognize that. But until we do, I think anything else we do will be nominally, marginally impactful.
I would, yes.
No, I just wanted to ask a quick question.
Yeah.
Morgan, on these four officers that you have, are they all over town, or do they have certain districts that they patrol or that they are responsible for?
Targeted neighborhoods. They're each assigned a quadrant of the community. But if someone is working a bite case in your district, and then another call comes in in your district, I'm gonna pull somebody from Larry's district to respond. Also, for the after-hours callouts for holidays, weekends, overnight, that one animal services officer is responding across the city. And so he may be near the shelter for livestock at large with two dozen cows loose, and then a bite comes in, it's at the emergency department, and that person's gotta cover both regardless of geographic location.
What I would recommend if council supports it is that, you've mentioned several issues that all require funding outside the context of the existing budget. I suggest you work with Tina, Daniel, Michael Dane, Bob Solis, and come up with some sort of targeted numbers, because we're talking several different issues. We don't know what those dollars are. We're gonna have to find the money to pay for it if council agrees to fund it all or part of it, et cetera. So we need specific dollars attached to specific things, a presentation made on those things. Council can decide which ones they will fund or not fund, and then finance. Daniel, Michael will need to come up with where those funds might exist to cover those requests. Is there any other, does a council member have any other ideas or suggestions, et cetera? Larry?
I just wanted to ask about the feral cat program.
Please ask.
We haven't talked about that. There were a number of large colonies of cats out there. I just wonder if y'all have noted any reduction due to the neutering of some of those animals?
We've absolutely seen a decrease in our cat calls for service, our annual cat intake, which is a cross-section of the community, that there are just fewer colony cats in the community. We've invested heavily in neighborhood colony assistance that, with donated funds and taxpayer dollars, both. The lingering ones that you might see, we need property owner permission to provide that service. We also need ideally a willing colony caregiver, where they would withhold food on days that we're trapping so that we can work those animals through the surgery schedule, get them vaccinated, and over time decrease that population. So ideally, we're doing both. We're working with property owner and colony caretaker, and because of the amount of area that a cat roams, those might be different people. But we have had a lot of success with that. We've been investing now for over five years in the spay neuter and return of community cats and have seen a decrease in our cat population, hundreds, hundreds fewer cats being born, hundreds fewer cats coming in. It wasn't uncommon that on a, you know, Tuesday after a holiday at ten a.m., there would be a line of trappers, of guys that over the weekend had caught a cat and were bringing it in, and that's just not happening anymore because we've got those pets spay neutered, returned, and they no longer need that service, have decreased nuisance behavior, and over time decrease the size of the colony.
May I ask what the ordinance says about people who come onto your private property and feed cats?
Certainly, the animal services section of the code states that the colony caregivers have to have permission, but I think that there's a bigger issue around trespassing and a penal code violation and a law enforcement component, that if there is someone coming on your private property without your permission to care for cats, we would recommend that it escalates to law enforcement at that point.
Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to compliment the people who were involved with those twenty-five dogs that were supposed to be euthanized sometime around Christmas who apparently adopted or fostered out. I know you were involved in it, I assume Paws was involved in it. I don't know the all the volunteers, but thank you very much.
San Angelo showed up for those pets, and our role in it is identifying who's at risk of euthanasia. At that point, Concha Valley Paws runs with it. We gave a number of days for response, and it was looking pretty bleak, and it was down to the wire, the final hours. Each and every one of those pets was saved, and we are grateful to the community and Concha Valley Paws for stepping up for those pets. That's a good point.
Up, Tommy.
Morgan, you may be going to do this anyway, but as you work through your requests, if you would just, if for no one but me on the council prioritize those and those that would have the biggest impact in your judgment in an overall sense, so that if we literally have to say we can do one and two, but not three, four, and five, that would be helpful for me.
Yes, and to even just test it, to see if you funded one and two, and then see if there's an impact before we move on to the others. But we certainly want it all identified and financial numbers put to the proposed items.
Yes, of course.
Other questions, comments? We will open it up, which I have messed up every time, to not allow public comment, so I'm not gonna do that. Go around, we're gonna open this up to public comment at this point.
Good morning. I'm Jenny Wilson with Concha Valley Paws, and I just wanted to actually make the recommendation and hope that perhaps there was some kind of way we could present Concha Valley Paws to you, to offer some more education on some of the programs that we do offer in our partnership with the city, because I think that would be beneficial, and it's a lot more than I can do in three minutes of public comment. But I do think we would love to have you all know more about what we do and pose those questions to us. I think it's when we all come together that we make real change. I am a huge advocate of spay neuter. I do believe that that is the answer to the issues that we face. We are in crisis. And some of the things that Morgan did touch on, but I kind of want to reiterate with you from our viewpoint, is our adoption pool is greatly affected by the type of animals that populate the shelter. And so we're in a community that is largely consists of senior citizens, college students, military, and a lot of renters. And what we see in the shelter is a lot of your large breed pit bull, shepherd mixes. And so those are, unfortunately, those are the animals that are discriminated against by a lot of rental properties here in San Angelo, which makes our pool for potential adopters so much smaller. Now, we do have a robust adoption program that I'm very proud of our team. We place over a thousand animals locally, where we did see decreases in those transports like Morgan mentioned. This is not just a problem specifically for San Angelo as far as the population crisis. We had, our world changed in 2020, and I don't think anybody has really realized how many changes that 2020 impacted on us, especially in the animal welfare industry. But you had a full year where the country was not operating as normal, there were fewer spay and neuters. Some cities were not enforcing their animal control practices as normal based on what they considered those vital services to be during that time. And so it's a trickle-down effect, it's affected all of us. And so therefore, we've seen communities where we would normally transport animals for adoption not have a demand for those pets. So this is a very complex, convoluted situation, and we are trying to address it from many different angles. But one of the things, I think the biggest thing that we have to be honest and say that we can't do anything about is the responsibility of the pet owner. It all boils down to that. Every animal in that shelter is adoptable. We've worked with Morgan to the point where she and her staff, working with the Paws staff, were identifying who's adoptable and who's not adoptable at a very early stage in the process, because space is such that you can't, you can't keep an animal that you would like to work with because there are more animals that are highly adoptable waiting to come in. And so having said that, every animal in that shelter is adoptable. Every animal in that shelter has been interacting with humans to the point where it is a pet-quality animal. And so that means that somewhere, somebody failed that animal. And I think the community needs to be reminded that it is against the law to abandon an animal, and there are programs out there to assist you in rehoming. We have a program called Second Chance, it's very much like the program Morgan was talking to you about. We have over fifty animals enrolled in that program right now, and all we ask is that you're a responsible pet owner. You call us the minute you find out that you're having to move to a place where they can't take your pet, and we start working to help you place it. The problem is, is we get the phone calls that say, I'm moving tomorrow and I have nowhere to put my pets.
I think what would be, I mean, I think, is that the timer, did it go off? So, but I would, you have a lot of information and a lot of good points that I think need to be heard. I would recommend that we put you on the agenda for presentation on next council agenda. I think it would be appropriate to do. Your point's very well taken, and we always say the responsibility lies within the, you know, we have a people issue that's created an animal issue. The animals do create the issue, people created the issue, and it always goes back to people. So we look forward to having you at the next city council meeting making a presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anything else, folks?
Yes.
Yes, we still have more public comment.
My name is Cindy Flores, and I am on the board of Concha Valley Paws. And I wanted to reinforce that spay neuter has got to be at the core of it. You can't kill your way out of it, you can't adopt your way out of it, you can't transport your way out of it. Spay neuter won't happen quickly, you won't see the numbers quickly, but as we saw with the cat population, it will take time, but it will come down. The communities that we transport to have a strong enforcement on spay neuter, and that is why they can take animals from us. My other encouragement is if you have any questions. My other encouragement is if you have any questions and you want to learn, or people have brought concerns, please reach out to Contra Valley Paws to speak on what we do. Come see our facilities, come look at our records, come educate yourself, do your due diligence, and come do that. We want to work with the city, we want to work with the shelter, and we look forward to continuing to do that, to improve it. But we encourage you all to come out and see.
Yeah, I would encourage Brian Groves and Laura Lai to create some video that we put out on our social media, et cetera, that goes through some of these specific things that you really offer this community.
Yes, but I would encourage you all to come out and see it firsthand as well.
I would agree, and I would, again, I know Brian, Brian Groves is back there listening, but, so this is a bigger, broader issue.
Yes.
And these seven people can certainly come visit and become more knowledgeable about it, but we need the whole public, the citizens of San Angelo, to be aware.
Yes, and I agree. It starts with you all, and then we can spread it out.
Perfect. Thank you.
I am Mary Wilson, and I reside at 1641 Parkview Drive. I am a director of Contra Valley Paws and have been on the board for almost 20 years. As evident by the sheer number of animals in our shelter, especially puppies that are impounded, it is only a matter of time until our community may be forced back to the policies of capture and kill. As a taxpayer and a homeowner, I do not support killing for space, and I am not alone. I want my tax dollars going towards humane care and solutions that save lives, prevent suffering, and places the responsibility back on the irresponsible people who created this situation. Therefore, I make the following recommendations. Appoint a group of animal welfare professionals and volunteers to review the ordinances of our community with other communities that have successfully addressed overpopulation concerns. This group would advise the council on drafting new ordinances or tweaking current ordinances with the oversight of the city's attorneys. Seek a budget amendment that would allow animal services to employ an animal control officer for the specific purpose of investigating problem breeding, advertisements for sale of pets, and enforcement of the spay neuter ordinance. This enforcement would be the first ticket, would be from the first ticket to compliance. It would be this officer's job to follow up with all pet owners found to be in violation until compliance is achieved, even after the court has heard the case and assessed fines. Contra Valley Paws is willing to assist violators with the spay neuter of their animals. Adjustments to the ordinances allowing breeding permits to exclude permits for pit bulls and large breed dogs, as the shelter population is evidence that our community demographics do not support the breeding of large breeds. We are a community of senior citizens, apartment dwellers, and a transient population of college students, military personnel, and renters. Small to medium-sized dogs do not languish in our city's shelter, but large breed dogs do, especially the pit and pit mixes. They are incredibly wonderful dogs, and they deserve so much more. Adjustments to the existing ordinances that would allow breeding permits to be revoked if an unaltered animal is impounded by animal control more than once. Work with shelter management to advise on policies and procedures which would ensure that 100% of the violations are reported to municipal court.
Further public comment? There've been a lot of issues brought forward, a lot of suggestions that have been brought forward, which I think all have merit and validity attached to them. Today is, has been a great presentation, Meg Morgan, so thank you for coming forward and updating us on the animal shelter. We will look at some budget amendments, we will consider the items that were just brought forward, we'll have some town hall meetings to bring everyone together to, to better discuss this issue. Today was just sort of an open door to get this, this subject more in the public's eye and conversation and change happening. So thank you, everyone. All right, so what we'll do now is move to item F. Thank you all for hanging around and waiting for item F to come up. First reading of public hearing of an ordinance for Z23-17 to rezone properties from single-family residential zoning district to two-family residential zoning district located at 1212, 1210, and 1208 Roosevelt Street. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council and Mr. Valenzuela, got a short presentation for you for a rezoning. Again, my name's Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning Development Services. This is zoning case Z2317 on Roosevelt. So you see these three properties outlined in red. They were platted back in, I want to say 2020 or maybe 2021. They currently have an RS1 single-family zoning. They were platted at a larger size with anticipation of possibly going to RS2 zoning if they weren't able to be sold or built out as RS1. There's a property owner and developer that has come forward, that has come forward with a rezoning on this and is looking to rezone those. This is in District 3, Councilman Harry Thomas, in the Fort Concho East neighborhood, and it's in, their intent is to build three duplexes. Roosevelt comes right off of Rio Concho, right as it crosses the Concho River, and so this is just to our east of our downtown area. So you can see our zoning, there are some areas around that to the south are fully developed and to the west have not fully developed, that are RM1 low-rise multifamily. That is kind of a homestead, where the property owner that owns a number of these, they built a house just to the west of Buchanan there, kind of up on the hill overseeing the Concho Valley, or the Concho River, excuse me, the Concho River there. But they are looking at how do they develop that 1104 property there. So you can see south of the property, there's an apartment complex that goes through, off of Benedict, and then there's another one there that is zoned RM1. And then you can start seeing that the RS1 starts past Irene, heading back towards Bell Street. This property here is fairly unique. There is kind of a mix there on Irene. There's a couple of single-family homes, there are a couple of single-family homes at 1204 and 1214 Roosevelt that the property owner had brought in from the Baptist community, that they brought in two moved houses there and restored those, and now they're looking to add some new development there behind them. City staff is recommending approval, as did Planning Commission. They saw this as a good transition from that single-family and the RM just kind of having a buffer in there. They are looking at adding potentially some more duplexes if these three go very well in that area. And so this is an area that they've got some smaller-sized houses that are around 1,300 square feet that are coming in, that are duplexes, they're large enough space, and the traffic, the road and traffic, we do believe will, will hold them with that RS2 zoning. Any questions?
Um, Harry.
I think this is, this warped very well over there, but that property's been vacant for as long as I've been in the city, so I think this transition to RS2 into the regular neighborhood is, is good. I recommend approval.
Second by Lucy, public comment. Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seemingly, no one is opposed, so that means a 7-0 vote. That concludes our regular agenda. There are no items on the closed session, so we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues, which is item B, consider approving various board nominations. Animal Service Advisory Commission, Jen Murphy, SMD2 to third term, ending January 2026. Civic Events Advisory Board, Norma Bronner, SMD4 to second term, ending December 2025. Fort Concho Museum Board, Lisa Marley, SMD2. Colleen Haddad, SMD3. And Sarah Clemens, SMD5, all to a second term, ending January 2026. Planning Commission, Luke Urich, SMD1. And Joe Self, SMD2 to a third term. Michelle Miller, SMD6 to a first full term, all January 2026. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, Jean-Marc Hoag, SMD1 as chairman of the board for a one-year term, ending January 2025. The Zoning Board of Adjustments, Lorenzo Lassiter, SMD1 to a first term. Terry Jackson, SMD3 to a first full term. Linda, Lyndon Roberts Galindo, SMD5. And Don Bonhardt, SMD6 to a second term. And Gary Cortez, mayor to a third term, all ending January 2026. Would council like to consider any of these separately, or would you like to consider these board nominations as a whole?
As a whole.
Okay, we will take a vote as a whole on items B. All those in favor, say, oh wait, public comment.
I like a motion.
No, I have a motion. Harry made a motion, it was seconded by Lucy, right. Oh, no, wait, that was another item.
We said one before.
Backup! Okay. May I have a motion for approval of the board nominations?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Tom. We will now open it up for any public comment. Seeing none, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of 8B approving all names and board nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approval is made 7-0. Announcements in consideration of future agenda items, we brought up several during today's meeting, and Tom said he had some additions to that.
So one, I'd like to bring up is the, I'm not sure what our ordinance is, we have trees that overhang into the street. I watched one rip the air conditioner off a RV the other day, and so I think that needs to be addressed. There's several in SMD2, and I don't know, Michael, if you're getting this one, but I think we need to have a policy that governs if you have a tree on your property or in your easement, you are responsible for it, and if it gets out into the street, it becomes an issue of which you're liable. But I think we need to bring that one up and revisit it, because you could write a ton of ordinance violations in my department. Number two, and this will go back to Morgan, I think there's a policy on dogs and what they're contained, they have to stay within a yard. Some of these are proximity yards that don't have a gate, so the one that bit my wife still has an open gate where they can get out, but there's proximity fence, and they don't know where, number one, if somebody's walking or talking by, they don't know if the proximity fence is on. So I think we need to address something as far as what qualifies for a containment of a pet in a yard.
Speaking of the pet issue, because it's a San Angelo animal shelter, right? So if someone lives in the county outside our city limits, are we obligated to take into our animal shelter animals that are not registered, but we don't know where they came from, because they're abandoned, so?
Yeah, I think Morgan's left, but I think the answer to that is no, we do not bring in animals from the county.
All right. Any other items for future consideration? Karen?
Do we need to formally ask for Morgan's town hall proposal to be on the agenda for our approval? Can you proceed without that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Okay, then I need a motion for a juror.
So moved.
So moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Stand up. Motion passes 7-0.